Good evening and welcome to this school committee meeting of January 8th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We have a full house tonight. And so I want to say that, goodness, that we're all here in person and that this meeting will be livestreamed through our, with the help of DCTV, also on our Dartmouth Community Media Television to be replayed, rebroadcast on DCTV Channel 9 on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, all different times of the day, as well as on DCTV Channel 18 on Monday, Saturdays at noon and Thursdays at 3:00. And so at this point in time, I would open-
Take a roll call?
Take a roll call to open up the meeting, Kate.
Kathleen Ammaral-
Here.
Chris Oliver-
Here.
Elizabeth Coughlin-
Here.
John Noons-
Yep.
Shannon Jenkins.
Thank you very much. So if anyone here is interested in providing public comment, any of the items on this evening's agenda, I ask that you just step forward, state your name, and then keep your comments as brief as possible. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maureen Sullivan Boyle. I'm a teacher in the district at the middle school. I know that the school calendar is on the agenda, I believe, and I don't know how that gets constructed. This is my 21st year here. I've never really cared one way or another. I just thought that there were a couple of days that we had off this year that were different than in the years past, and I was just wondering if it was possible to get educator input when we're putting that together, because I don't know that that happens, so that's all. Thank you.
Hearing none. I'm going to take, I just want to propose a swap to the agenda. So we're going to kind of take the minutes and the consent agenda, but then we're going to, I propose, with your approval, moving our old business, our budget discussion, ahead of our capital improvement discussion, so that, as you know, we'll be convening into joint session at 6:30. I want to make sure that we have that presentation complete. So with that, I will take a motion to approve the regular session minutes for December 11th, which was part of our packet.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For?
I'll abstain.
Oh, three to one abstention.
Three, zero, one.
Thank you. And I also take a motion to approve the executive session minutes for that same meeting of December 11th that were part of our packet.
So moved, Madam Chair, that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second by Mr. Oliver. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay, so that's three-
Motion passes.
Two, zero, one. Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Saban McGuire to open it up for our consent agenda.
Great. So I'm excited to be able to introduce the opportunity for Dartmouth High School students to participate in a cultural excursion. As you know, you approved this excursion, I think the exact same excursion is about to happen this spring, and Mr. Carvalho is here this afternoon, this evening, to, if you have any questions to talk about, possibly extending that and repeating that trip next school year, next spring. So Mr. Carvalho is here.
Good. That's you guys, if that's okay?
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, sir.
So, yes, so just to reiterate, I'm Nathan Carvallo, Portuguese teacher at the high school, and as Dr. Saban McGuire just mentioned, that last year, not even a year ago, I had asked for approval of an excursion to Portugal and Spain, which is going to be taking place this coming April, and it's been a huge success. Just one night after my initial meeting with families after our session last year, we had almost 100 students sign up to go. Yeah, it was, it was a little intense. Obviously, I am not taking 100 teenagers to separate countries, but we did narrow it down to at least get us all on one bus. I wanted to keep us together as much as possible. I don't want to have people separated. So we have 47 students coming in May, May, April, and seven chaperones. So it's been going really well. The students are extremely excited about it, and it just looks good to show that, you know, our world language department is alive and well at Dartmouth High. With that said, though, because of its success, there was a very large amount of students that remained on the waiting list. And in order to hold your spot on the waiting list, you did have to put down a deposit. And it has come to the point where we cannot allow anyone else from the waiting list to get on for this year's trip, because it's just too close, they have to stop booking our flights. So EF Tours, which is the company that we're working with, proposed was that if we could get the same exact trip approved for next year, the students that are on the current waiting list would get first dibs on next year's trip and not lose their deposit, which was a really good way of doing it. Obviously, ideally, I would have preferred to have done the trip once before agreeing to do it again, but that's the way the cards were dealt this year. I'm confident that this year is going to be a really big success. I am very confident in the group of chaperones that are going to be on the trip. Mr. Shea, our principal, will be joining us as well, so I'm very much looking forward to it. The students that are on the trip are all great kids, all our kids are great, and so I am not worried about anything. And thankfully, EF Tours, the company that we're working with, really does everything. So in front of you is the information for next year's trip. You do have the total cost for students. On the first page there is going to be $4,099, but just to let you know what that price includes, that is the flights there and back, that is the hotels already, every single night included, that is breakfast and dinner every single day already included, that is the bus that we'll be taking from Madrid all the way through Spain to northern Portugal down to Lisbon, so that is all included in that price already. The only thing that is not is lunch, which the kids do, also the entry fees to every museum and palace and thing we go to, that's all included in that price already. So it looks hefty, but when you look at what it includes, it's not-
Almost all inclusive.
It's basic, yes, it's basically all there. It's only a few hundred dollars more than it was last year. Obviously, with inflation, things are going up, but that is, that is going to be the price for students. And then everything else, there's a more in-depth on the third page of each day, what we're going to be doing, what the trip entails, the excursions. We have some fundraising ideas, which we're also doing for this year's trip that we're planning, so that's all there, as well as the standards that it encompasses. So that is basically it. So there's already a few students who have, I think we already have 10 signed up, we haven't even made it completely public to anyone outside of the waiting list yet, so pray for me on that one when that happens. As of right now, from the current waiting list, we have about 10 that are already, have already put into the company that they're interested in going. So I am anticipating an equally successful amount of kids wanting to go, so that's basically. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Noons?
This is great. I mean, I've just come back from Spain and Portugal, so this is, this is great. Loved fatama. You know, I think, any of the dinner, I just noticed dinner sales like cast and pig and things of this nature, please let us know. If I don't have to shop cook or clean, it's wonderful, so-
Will do.
Let us know.
I'll be, I'll be sure you find out.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you for your presentation. I think this is a great opportunity for our students. Happy to see that Mr. Shea's going as well. I would, I would just ask that, since we're kind of essentially looking to do a repeat next year of the same trip, that maybe you could come back to us and share, maybe with a couple of students, after the trip. I don't know, this is in, when's this year's trip, in May?
April break.
April, so maybe in May, if we could have you back here with some couple of students. I would love to hear what their experience was, especially if we're going to be looking to do this next year. Once again, I think this is a great opportunity.
Absolutely.
Are most of you live long, too, or are you daily, like live about 8:00?
Great.
We'll be putting stuff out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shea.
That's great. I love seeing the enthusiasm of all the students.
Oh. I was like, no one's going to sign up.
Ta-da.
Ta-da.
Motion approved, Madam Chair.
Great.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? Yeah, fantastic opportunity. Thank you for leading this effort, and I look forward to that live broadcast. Feel like I'm there, right? I haven't been there since 2001, I think, for my money.
It does, it does look like you're keeping them extraordinarily busy, so-
Yes, I made sure of that.
Yes, every day, there's something on the agenda, so that's wonderful.
Long days, early mornings.
They'll be exhausted.
Yes. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimous for nothing.
Four, zero.
Thank you very much for presenting to us.
Thank you.
Yes.
And so as mentioned, I would like to now turn it over for old business, so if we go down to the fiscal '25 budget discussion, further discussion, I'll turn it over.
Yep, we'll start off, and then I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Kylie. As you, it seems like a lifetime ago that we were here talking about December 11th, seems like a lifetime ago to me. Anyway, a lot's happened between then and now in terms of looking at the budget, but I think that what we'd like to do tonight is just go quickly through some of the presentation highlights from December 11th, and based on some of the feedback that we've received from our school committee and other folks here in the community, we have all made a true concerted effort to go back and, and make some decisions and come up with a couple of scenarios for you to consider in terms of moving forward with this year, what is truly a challenging budget. I think it's important to preface the entire budget presentation around the importance of acknowledging that a town school budget does in fact reflect its priorities and its commitment to its children, and I just want to put that out there right from the very start, and then at the same time, just continue to connect us to what our mission is in this school system, and that is to provide a quality education for all of our learners. And I think what you'll hear from us as part of the presentation this evening is how some of our learners have indeed changed over time. We want to bring us back to Portrait of a Learner, reminding us that this was a community effort, a school community, and an effort that was truly, I think, something that happened before I got here, but from what I can see, was a true commitment from not only your school community, but your community at large, to inform what the expectations are around what we want to see from our Dartmouth graduates. So again, you'll be hearing more about this as we move on, but again, the competencies are right there, and you can imagine that, you know, our students aren't leaving school with these competencies without some significant efforts from our teaching staff and our general, and our broader education community at large. So we, again, want, want to go back to school enrollment, something that I think Dartmouth should be really proud of, is that overall, there has been a clear commitment to protecting class size in this community, and we want to reiterate that class size is an important, although not solely, but an important factor in supporting student learning and overall student emotional, student social emotional learning. And we can see this here in connecting, again, student achievement, because without student emotional, without students feeling safe and feeling a sense of support from their school leaders and the educators in their building, you're not going to see the type of student achievement that you have been fortunate here to have in this community over a number of years. And at the same time, we want to remind folks that we do have some work to do in terms of student achievement and improvement. So again, you see student experiences. I love talking about the student experiences here in Dartmouth, and I'm fortunate that I've been able to experience many of these firsthand, and you can see, there's your band, there are your sports teams, there are your clubs, they're represented throughout this district from pre-K to 12, and I think it's important for us all to remember that those things don't happen by accident. Those are really the result of the commitment from the town, from the finance, the finances that we use in this town to support students and to support our educators. Again, none of this is by accident, just like our trip to Spain and Portugal isn't accidental, it takes somebody who's willing to organize that and put in the effort for those types of, for the, for students to have those types of experiences. Again, lots of fun things happening. I love the sailing. I can't wait to get out and see what that looks like. That's completely new to me, from where I come from. But we also thought that, if you remember at the beginning, I said, let's think about how our students have changed over time. Now, there have been questions about, and we want to make sure that we all have a common understanding about what we mean by selected student population as a percent of our total enrollment. And one important factor that you will see has changed pretty dramatically over time is that 43.2% of our Dartmouth students are high need students. So what does that mean? That means that high need students include, in that number, we include low income students, students with disabilities, or our English language learners. 30.4% of our Dartmouth students are in fact low income, and what that means is that they're either eligible for supplemental nutrition assistance or transition assistance for families' independent children, they may be part of the DCF foster care program, or they might be receiving mass health. Equally important is that 19.8% of our stu, our Dartmouth students are students with disabilities, and that, as you know, students with disabilities are entitled by law to have individual education plans developed to support their needs, and that this in fact does impact their student progress. And the fact that these numbers have increased so dramatically hopefully will tie to the need to have students have the appropriate adults and educators to support their learning. And now Mr. Kylie is going to talk about the selected student population over time, and he's been here really throughout this past decade to see some of these changes happen.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So Dr. Saban McGuire highlighted where we are right now in terms of percentages, but I think it's fairly powerful to take a look at the trends over the last 10-year period here. So Dartmouth's percentage of high need students has increased over the last 10 years, 47% from 29% to over 43%. Our, the blue line, our percentage of low income students, has increased 73% over that same 10-year period, from 17.6% to over 30%. And our students with disabilities has increased 58% over that 10-year period, from 12.5% to 19.8%. So I think what, you know, we can take from this is that there's been a significant increase in challenges that our students are facing, and that during that stretch, our budgets have increased modestly, mostly cost of living increases that have done very little to actually increase service. So you see that, you know, there's a significant increase in, in challenges for our kids, and we want to be able to provide the resources that our students need to succeed, and that kind of leads us to where we are today. I won't go through all of the, all of the spending statistics. We know that they're not great, but we did add to our presentation a summary of per pupil spending. So just as a, to review, total spending is $2,810 less than the state average. Of the 322 districts in the state, we're 266th. Teacher spending is $374 less than the state average, 196th out of 322. Insurance and benefits, $1,542 less than the state average, 316th of 322. Administration, $210 less than the state average, 288th of 322. Operations and maintenance, $543 less than the state average, 307th of 322. And pupil services, which includes things like transportation, athletics, nursing services, student activities, things like that, we're $80 per student less than the state average, 153rd out of 322. So, you know, we've talked about this a fair amount since this year and the prior budget cycle, but I think this illustrates that Dartmouth taxpayers receive an incredible bang for your buck, and that, you know, above average performance for a far below average cost. So that leads us to our, our budget. So we made a few changes based on, based on recent developments to our budget. So we made sure that the budget reflected the decision to utilize school choice funding for the $200,000 technology replacement former article, and $150,000 of curriculum material funding. So we removed those from our budget proposal, included them here. In addition, we've removed the reduction of the five positions that we previously reduced. We added those back into the budget. The reason we did that is after quite a bit of discussion with the town side of government, we determined that it was best to present a level service budget. Now, we're still level service-ish, it's not quite level service, but it's more level service than it was previously, so it's, it's more consistent with what the town is, is presenting. In fact, this is exactly what the town is going to present tonight at the joint meeting, so we wanted to make sure that happened. These slides all just reflect the removal of, of technology and instructional materials, the school choice, so they reflect those changes that we just spoke about. And I think that leads us to something that we've added. You know, you asked us to look at school choice funding, obviously, you, you know, made a recommendation at the last meeting regarding this. So we put together a few slides here, and this is where we'll spend the bulk of our time on the, on the, for the budget tonight, is, first of all, Dartmouth began participating in 2017 with school choice, not that long ago in the grand scheme of things. We receive $5,000 a year, that's the state rate, it's been the same for 20-some years. They don't increase that, which isn't particularly fair, but, but that is what it is. The only change is if a student is, a student with disabilities, we do receive some additional funding. Right now, the students with disabilities represent about 11% of our school choice students. We currently have 132 school choice students with estimated revenues of $680,000. Overall, school choice students represent 4% of Dartmouth students, and I guess it would just be important to note that during the pandemic and the institution, institution of ESER funding by, by the federal government, we utilized those ESER funds in lieu of school choice funds in many cases. So we have built up a balance in school choice, and we're going to talk about that. So one thing that we could consider with school choice, this slide illustrates a five-year plan, which the beginning balance is the beginning balance on July 1st of this past year, the FY '24 balance, and that would take us all the way through June 30th of We've projected revenue at, at sort of status quo revenue based on last year. It can fluctuate a little bit, so it could go up a little bit, could go down a little bit, based on enrollment and, and the needs of kids, so that is somewhat variable, and certainly, the biggest variable nature of this is whether the school committee wants to do it. So this assumes that we're going to continue this, the school choice program, of course. Now expenditures, so in this proposal, we would fund the technology replacement, so we were already funding technology out of school choice, including throughout the pandemic to an extent. In addition to that, we are now going to be funding more based on the decision you made at the last school committee meeting for, for fiscal year '25. We're assuming in this scenario that that continues out through fiscal year '28. Curriculum materials, similarly, we have funded some curriculum materials, relatively small amount in the grand scheme of things. In the past, with school choice funds, we would continue to do so, we would also fund the amounts that, that we've moved out of the fiscal year '25 budget, and incorporate a curriculum cycle that really targets some dire need in our district and focus on improving where we are. Supplies, we had moved $50,000 into the budget last year in the FY '24 budget cycle into school choice, so we'll continue to fund that, plus some amounts that we already had spent in school choice on a regular basis, part of that. High school library renovation, we had, we've actually had this in here since right around the beginning of the pandemic, and we've not gotten around to actually completing that project, but we do want to do that, and we've reserved those funds there. The Dartmouth Memorial Stadium, back in, back years ago, when we, when we put in, we were planning to put in the turf originally and then proceed to the rest of the project, we had talked about using school choice funds sort of as a, as a component of the overall funding scheme to support that project. We did use a little bit to, during when the, for the work that we've completed so far for the actual turf installation, so we have done that, but we've reserved some funds here for that. Music stipends, that's something we've been doing and would like to continue to do that. Same thing with like strength and conditioning, professional development, those are all things that we currently do. We have funded some after-school programs through this. We've also funded a fair amount of summer programming through the ESER funds and after-school programming, so we do need a place, a home for that. So we proposed that. So what happens with this plan over time is that at the conclusion of five years, you would have spent the entire reserve that we currently have in place. Now, the difficult thing that we would need to plan for in advance is that you have about $1 million, if you look at fiscal year '28, for example, you have a little over $1 million worth of expenses, and you have $680,000 worth of revenue. So there is a problem at some point to be addressed here, but obviously, you have time to make some decisions in this plan. This is an alternative. So in this alternative, we would look at school choice as a funding mechanism for deficits. And really, what we would be doing is taking the fiscal year '25 deficit, which as it currently stands would be $1.5 million, and funding it through the amounts that have been, you know, accumulated during the pandemic in the school choice account, and it, we would be able to fund that deficit for a year through this plan. In the following year, as it currently stands, we would not be able to do that, so there would be some ability to absorb some funding in fiscal year '26, but we would have an issue that would need to be addressed further down the line. We, this is, A, against the town's financial policies. However, it was part of our plan, you know, as we were developing the plan, the ESER plan, to develop some reserves for when ESER goes away. We've known that now for several years, that that was going to happen, and so I think we've done a good job saving some money, but we do have some options available to us. Now, that is essentially one-time money, though, and when it's gone, it's never coming back, right? So the annual revenue is- So, the annual revenue is six hundred and eighty thousand, and that can't solve the problems that, you know, we're going to face, the structural problems with the deficit that we're going to face. So, we'd be doing, you know, a temporary measure to a structural problem, and that would be, you know, a relatively short window of time that we could accomplish that. So, those were the changes that we made to the budget process, and I'd be happy to talk about, you know, any of them more, or answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. That's a lot of information. Turn it over to my colleagues, Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kylie, for this. Couple of things, number one, thank you for mentioning the fact that we have used, we haven't used a lot of this money, and it has built up because of the fact that we had the federal funds because of the pandemic. I know the, I caught part of the finance committee meeting from the other night, and they were, lack of better terms, chirping about this, and, you know, so, but, and the other thing is, per se, the town has the stabilization fund and the reserve fund as their quote-unquote "emergency funds" type of deal, if, you know, something comes about type of deal. Fortunately, we have this if something comes up, I mean, thank God we had this when the pandemic hit, because this is how we get all the laptops, you know, the one-to-one for the students to be able to zoom in. So, that's, you know, that's fortunate there. You're absolutely right, if you look at the spending alternative, that's a one-year deal, because after that, it goes away, and it becomes unfundable, because you can't, you're not going to have a deficit, because God forbid you have a deficit and it, for whatever reason, then the state's going to tap your free cash for that amount of money, and now we're really in trouble. So, I don't think, this unfortunately, in my opinion, in my opinion only, is not a viable alternative. I mean, if we do it once, that's all we're going to be able to do it, type of deal, we're not going to be able to, you know, we can kick the can down the road for a year, but that's all we're going to get out of it, is a year. And then, we're going to be right, we're going to be sitting here this time next year, still trying to figure out what we're going to do for '26. And the other thing I think we have to look at too is, and everybody's got to understand, this is January 8th, and in my years on this committee, this is the earliest, and I really mean that in all sincerity, that we're working on a budget. I mean, usually, these numbers are being put together at this point in time. We don't have any numbers from the state, so we're making an estimate, and number two, if you didn't see anything today, the state has come out and said that the revenues are not where they should be, and they're talking about nine C cuts. Now, are they going to tap local aid, are they going to get into, you know, different things, who knows? But there's still cuts that possibly could affect, you know, this municipal, this town type of deal, so we're going to have to be very cognizant of that. So, I appreciate this, I really do, and, you know, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I appreciate all the hard work that went into this, Mr. Kylie. I think the alternative plan is very interesting. Yes, this is our reserve fund, and it was nice to have there for emergencies, but we are one town, and the school is part of the town, and the town has a reserve fund, so if we can't solve our budget issues by next year, hopefully the town will back us. I know we talked last meeting about an override, which is necessary at some point. Prop two and a half is crippling the school's ability to do the job they've been asked to do, and the town as well. So, what this allows us to do, as I see it, is not rush into the override, not try to jam it into three months, which is what we'd have to do, have special town meeting, and then a special election, which costs the town more to do. So, yes, we put away school choice funds specifically to help us get over the ESER cliff, as we call it, and maybe this allows us to have a cohesive plan about an override that we can present at the fall town meeting, that we, if it passes, we can work on getting the whole community behind us for the town election without incurring extra costs to the town above the override. But, the bottom line is, I believe we need an override at some point, and this would allow us to be more thoughtful and the community to be more engaged and more informed.
Thank you, Bess. Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, I have, I have a lot of thoughts. I have a lot of thoughts, and I certainly appreciate your, both of your opinions. I think what I'm going to say, you know, reflects a little bit of both of you, and I'm only speaking for myself here. But, first of all, this is, we've got to remember that school choice is, you know, we've got to look at it as one-time revenue, based upon the fact that this was just, you said 2017 was when it was the first, I think in the history of the Dartmouth schools was the first time that we've, that this committee voted in school choice. You look at all the programs that this has been able to fund over the years and will continue to fund. I do think that we're fortunate to have school choice and have this stable, lack of a better term, stabilization fund, in which the town is, you know, allowed to have, and we're able to do this because of the vote that a school committee takes each year to approve school choice, to allow it in. And as far as I can see, I understand Mr. Nunes's point about, in a couple of years, this is going to be gone, and I also can appreciate Bess's point in which, you know, we are one town and we should be working together on this. So, I had the opportunity to sit with Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Saban McGuire, Mr. Kylie, and a couple of representatives from the Finance Committee. We had a, we had a joint meet, well, not a joint meeting, but a budget subcommittee meeting in which we had the Fin, some members of the FinCom, and I know that this is certainly has come up time and time again, the school choice piece. The only thing, without rambling on here, the, the only thing that I would be willing to vote on and consider is allowing the school district to stabilize the FY25 budget using school choice, the operating budget deficit. And it would only be for FY25, and would only be if we could get some guarantees from the other boards in this town, the select, number one being the Select Board, and having some open dialogue with the Finance Committee. I certainly agree that it would be tough, a tough timeline with town meeting and to pass an override and educate our, educate the citizens, but at some point, we cannot, we can't continue to operate this way, because the numbers, the charts speak for themselves. So, you know, going into the joint meeting, let's, I'll be open, but at the end of the day, I will not vote, or, you know, make a motion for a vote to approve anything unless we can get some guarantees from the Select Board.
Thank you. I mean, I, I think all that I would add is I agree with Mr. Oliver, and I do appreciate all the work put in to providing these, you know, this, this option, these alternatives. But to Mr. Oliver's point, you know, our, our school choice, and, and you talked about this, Mr. Kylie, we have this revenue, we have this money because of the incredibly terrible situation COVID-19, to allow us to utilize ESER funding for the things and above and beyond that we would have been taking out of school choice. I worry, it's very risky, kind of risk averse in my life, and I worry that, you know, there are some folks who fundamentally do not agree with school choice for reasons that they're entitled to, and, you know, it has only been since 2017 that we've been voting this in. There is a likelihood with new members coming in, in the spring, that, that we do not vote, because this, this vote happens in late April?
January. January.
Oh, so we vote?
We vote in Jan.
No, not budget.
No, no, but we'll vote in Jan, we're going to vote the end of January for school choice, for school choice for next year.
Okay, so, but still, you know, it is vulnerable to non-renewal based on a simple vote taken by five folks as part of their service to the town, as school committee members. So, I appreciate the effort in, you know, offering to do our part, but also, in doing our part and presenting this, it still doesn't really even move the needle in terms of how we currently, you know, I'll just say it, value the work done, really, by saying we pay, you know, on the bottom ten percent per pupil for getting that bang for our buck. That's not sustainable, and so this plan still doesn't really move the needle in any way to provide additional funding per pupil. As you noted, the needs are going up, that's, that's not just happening in Dartmouth, that's a, that's a trend throughout our nation, throughout the world, I would, I would, I would offer. Students are coming to us with more needs. School teaching is not what it was thirty years ago, ten years ago, it's ever-changing, and when we, we learn, we do better, and we learn from data that really drives our instruction, and what you bring to us is data, and that's, those are facts, that's, you know?
Data speaks for itself.
Data speaks for itself. I mean, those lines are going up, it's not to say that they're, you know, these are just our students, and, you know, those high needs are on our basketball team, in our band, I mean, that is who we are as a community, we each have things that are hard for us and things that come with ease, and as a community, one Dartmouth, we've got to do what we can to do our best by all of the students and the staff that, that support them. So, I would agree with Mr. Oliver in that, in your, what you mentioned about what you would support a vote toward in, in fiscally, up to fiscal year '25, yeah, and that's really all I have to add in addition to what you all have added. Something's, something's got to give, so I really appreciate your, what you've brought to us today.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Oliver?
And just one more other thing to think about is, I was just looking it up here, the town, we do not have a special education stabilization fund in the town of Dartmouth, a lot of other districts operate with a special education stabilization fund, and we all know, you know, we have students coming and going all the time, and we have students' needs. Once again, the data speaks for itself, students' needs changing all the time, and that's a, that's a tight line sometimes, in which, instead of having to go to the, you know, go and back-to-town meeting and ask for more money and whatnot, we're able to, either, because we don't have a stabilization fund, we're able to manage a lot of our costs in-house by having the school choice. So, just something else, you know, I would love to see a stabilization, another stabilization fund voted in for this purpose, to help with our fluctuating needs. So, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, that's something else that we don't have, that we probably could use for those years, that we have these unexpected expenses.
Good point. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Any other, Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just through you to Dr. Saban McGuire, I know, close by to this one, there is a slide on student achievement with, right, can you go back one? Yeah, one there. I just, excuse me, I'm fighting a head cold, I apologize. But, you know, something I just want everybody to, to be aware of is, you know, the education our student, you know, take a look at the AP exams that us students take and the qualifying scores that they get, I know Mr. Shea and Ms. Shavia gave us a nice presentation in the fall on this type of deal, but, boy, this really brings it to light when you talk about, you know, it looks like, you know, five hundred students took in it, took the exam and four, five hundred exams taken and almost four hundred, you know, getting college credit for them, that's pretty good, I'll take that. But that's, again, something else that's out there that our students are doing, our faculty is doing and such, so.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, I mean, Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Anything else? Let's move on to the next.
So, can I just ask for a clarification? What, what are you asking from the Select Board and Finance Committee as a, as a promise or, like, that they will support the override, or is there something else?
Good question. So, I guess what I'm thinking about is, we need, I would like to see some kind of, yes, we agree, we're going to get the planning going on and override for the fall, that's what I guess what I'm looking for, that we're saying that, and they're saying that, one, we need to spend down our school choice.
Yep.
And, two, the timeline, which I agree, is a little tight, because we only have, I think, in my opinion, we only have one shot at this.
That's.
Right? We only have one, we only have one shot at this override. So, if we're going to take a shot at it, I don't want to be, I guess, even personally, I don't want to be rushed on it, and we all need to work together as a town to make this happen, that's the other piece of this. If we're going to truly try to get this override passed to fix our structural deficit, we've got to work together to educate the entire town, families, you know, everyone. So, I'm just looking to them, if, because I, I'm assuming that the pushback that we're going to get when we go into the joint meeting is that you have, it's going to be a tough sell, I've already heard it, it's going to be a tough sell to pass this override to the citizens in town, knowing that we have X amount of money in the, in the school choice line, because that's out there, in addition to, it's going to be tough to get everyone educated. So, all I'm looking for is some kind of, I don't want to say guarantee, but some kind of conversation, open dialogue with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, that they'll support us, and they'll, they'll support the override in the fall.
Great.
Thank you for asking that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you to Dr. McGuire, Mr. Kelly, Kylie, where's the town stand with their budget at this point in time, I mean? Are they going to be, are they going to be, when they put theirs together, are they going to say, we're shot, I'm being facetious, a hundred bucks, and we need an over, or are they going to be, where, where's the, the town portion of the budget, not the school department, but the town portion of the budget stand?
So, Mr. Nunes, my understanding is that they have not yet prepared their, their portion of the budget. So, but I do believe that there's been discussion about preparing multiple scenario budgets on their end, depending on the actions taken by the boards. But I think they were waiting to see tonight whether there would be, what the action of the boards would, would take before they, you know, move forward with their, with their budget preparation. Not to say that there aren't some departments that have already done work on it, I'm sure there are.
Yeah.
But they don't have a, it's not published.
Put together.
Yeah, it's not published, put together, or anything like that at this point.
To that point, I, I just want to reiterate that just appreciating those scenarios with utilizing and just offering us those as possible options, because it sounds like there is, it sounds like the pushback is most likely a real lack of understanding of what the school choice, what that money, why that money exists, like, maybe... of what the school choice, what that money, why that money exists, like, maybe folks sort of are not putting together the fact that Esser came in and was able to, you know, we were able to, to charge off some of the things that would have been spent down on school choice. So it just seems like there was a, they missed that memo or previous presentation, which I get, I mean, we can't, it's a lot to process, but.
It is.
Go ahead.
It's okay to add something to that, in that line of thinking. I mean, so, for instance, Mr. Galishaw has done an amazing job putting together a, during the pandemic, pre-pandemic preparing, right, but then managing throughout the pandemic all of our technology resources so we could shift from fully remote to then hybrid and then back into, back into operations. And so he, he, but during that time, he had a significant amount of resources allocated to technology, thank goodness, right? So we had, in the preparation phase, we had school choice, then we had federal funding that, both in the form of Esser and in the form of Esser-related federal grants, COVID, COVID grants, to the tune of about $700,000 in total that we spent on technology with federal COVID-related money. Now, that would have been, likely have to have been spent out of school choice. So it's just one example of, you know, why that money exists and the lack of understanding of why that money exists, but those monies were, you know, provided by the federal government, we're fortunate to receive them, but, yeah, we would have had to do it ourselves.
And I can imagine the cost of, you know, thinking about it, all of those one-to-one devices that our students had in their hands, and the accidental breakage, I think maybe three or four times during that time, we were like, oh, my goodness, fortunate that we have other devices we weren't supposed to really use, but in a pinch, but quick turnaround of, you know, mitigating those damaged devices for our students. So it's not like a one, okay, you haven't had this one-to-one device to use for 12 years now, it, it, things happen, you know, with anyone, adult students alike, and, and the team was there to, so I'm sure that that came at, at also an additional cost as well as time. So there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a lot that you can see, and then there's a lot of stuff that is accounted for that is hard to really see. That is just critical to these things moving forward, for sure. So thank you for that. Anyone else?
No.
No, I thought I saw a little hand. So at this time, I would turn it over again through Dr. Saban McGuire for the discussion on the fiscal year '25 through '29 capital improvement plan.
Okay, so, Mr. Kylie, before I even turn it back over to Mr. Kylie to talk about the capital improvement plan, I just wanna take just a minute to thank, really, everybody. You know, our leadership team at the school level, certainly at the central office level, and certainly with Mr. Kylie, going through what I would say, you know, multiple iterations of this budget, and in some cases, it was done on a very short timeline, and I'm just so appreciative of the team that, that I have around me here in Dartmouth, because we've been able to come together and to be proactive, and at the same time, recognize that sometimes we have to be flexible, and we just need to stay focused on making sure that this budget reflects the values of the community towards supporting its students. And so, along the same lines, Mr. Kylie's gonna talk about capital improvement, which, you know, isn't as exciting sometimes for folks, but really critical that we have facilities that are well-maintained and support the needs of our students and our educators.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So, you know, as, as we know, and we've talked, you know, at length, and need to talk more about our long-term capital needs, in terms of replacement of buildings, renovation of buildings, major building components. This is more the operational, making sure the buildings are going to continue to be able to be used, plan than the big-picture plan. So this is for fiscal year '25 through '29. It would be up for consideration for the June town meeting this year forward. So we will, there's, there's a long list of requests here, and I'm not gonna go through every item, but I will talk about, first about the fiscal year '25 requests, and then I'll highlight a few other items that are on the list, and I'd certainly be happy to talk about any of the individual items as we go. So, technology infrastructure security improvements. So this is a $100,000 request. I've placed these in a sort of draft priority order, and that's what I'm gonna follow at this point. This is to replace existing computer network equipment that are critical and have reached the end of their useful lives. The current infrastructure for technology in our district is, was installed between 2013 and 2015. So, you know, we've got some aging equipment, obviously, in the tech world, that's really aging, and we need to replace it. So this includes Wi-Fi access points, 89 of them, a new Wi-Fi controller, new main switch, firewall upgrades. The redesigned network will improve security and accommodate higher speeds of transmission. This is only a portion of the costs, so the $100,000 is our share of the cost. The costs are in excess of $200,000 and would be partially funded by the federal E-rate program, if we receive, hopefully receive the monies and can move forward with these important improvements. The second thing on our list is student transportation vehicle for the 18 to '22 transition program. This, I did increase the amount of this, based on research that I've done. It was, this was on our list last year, didn't get funded. It's a $90,000 request. This vehicle is necessary to provide transportation to, for students to attend volunteer career education and life skills opportunities. We, throughout this process, also identified that there's an opportunity here where this vehicle could help with some athletic activities off hours. So it'll be a multi-use, multi-use vehicle. The next thing, the third thing on the list, is maintenance vehicle replacement, $175,000. This request is to replace two maintenance vehicles with model year that are currently model year 2013. It's not as much the mileage on these, because we do drive fairly short distances, right, from school to school, it's the fact that they're rotting and falling apart, unfortunately. So they've, they've definitely surpassed their useful lives. I've been putting money into them, and it's a slippery slope, and they're already, you know, more than 10 years old and, and, you know, need to be replaced. Flooring replacement. So last year, this was the only thing that got funded in the capital improvement plan process, and we've spent almost all of the money. We would like to continue to do this. So this is necessary, we have a program that we are replacing flooring containing asbestos containing materials in the schools gradually, and making our way around the buildings, and doing the ones that are worse first. And so last summer, we did a lot of, a lot of spaces, mostly at the Quinn School, and accomplished a great deal. We need to continue that. So this would be for the Quinn School, the Middle School, the DeMello School, and the Potter School, those are the buildings that still have flooring that needs to be replaced. It's original flooring from the 50s and 60s, so. Fire system upgrades. So I'm asking, this is our fifth item on the priority list, I'm asking for $50,000. So it is necessary to upgrade and modernize our fire systems at some point here. This project would be undertaken over the course of several years. This would begin with the design funds for the DeMello and the Potter Schools. So you'll see requests after that for the actual replacement in successive years. The sixth item on the list is high school track reconstruction. So we did receive an estimate, now, I'm not sure that this is still a good estimate, but it was approximately $540,000. That was some time ago, so it is possible that that has, may have gone up a little. The track at the high school has really surpassed its useful life, it's deteriorating, crumbling, cracking. We're repairing it, but at some point, and we think it's within the next two years, it likely might not be usable for athletic events. The track is utilized daily for athletics, physical education by the community, a lot of people walk on the track, so we certainly need it and need to maintain it. The seventh item on the list is bathroom renovations for $150,000. So we have a lot of 1950s, 60s fixtures in our buildings, and to the point where if you, there's a lot of school staff out there. Chuck, let me do this. The particular, like, one area in particular, like, so there's sinks that need to be replaced that they don't make parts for anymore, there's, there's a lot of different things. But particular concern for me is some safety issues that we have. So, like, the partitions in some of the bathrooms are, like, rusty at the bottom with jagged metal edges. That's not great in an elementary school, because I was an elementary kid once, and I would have done something stupid and cut myself on that rusty metal. So, you know, we wanna, we wanna take care of those, those buildings and those things so that we don't have any concerns. Interior and exterior painting, that's the eighth item on our list, for $75,000. This, I think we do a very good job at this, but we need more money to be able to continue to obtain the interiors and exteriors of the buildings. The ninth item on the list, energy-efficient lighting project. So we have still a fair amount, this is for $120,000. It would fund efficiency improvements in, at several schools. We, of course, always, if we have utility incentives available, we will work in conjunction with those, and in a lot of cases, there will be some. So we'll get more bang for our buck with that, you know, certainly with that $120,000, in addition to the fact that we'll actually save money. And if you might recall, it wasn't exactly a lighting project, but one of the reasons that I budgeted utilities at virtually level funding for next year is because of efficiency improvements that we've been making, and, you know, so we wanna continue those processes, but it does take some money in order to be able to get money back and save money in the long run. The 10th item on the list is music equipment, so we have a $65,000 request. It's been on our list a while. It's to replace existing music equipment that's beyond its useful life and our ability to repair. In this, in this request particularly is tubas, chimes, and some other equipment that, I will say that I think we do a great job extending the life of our equipment and repairing it, and, but there is a point where we need to make some investment in, in what we have, and we are at that point. The Quinn School has a generator. It needs to be replaced, it doesn't work. It's, it's $150,000 to replace it. It would not be installed where the current generator is, which is inside the building, they won't allow you to do that anymore. This is a 1960s piece of equipment that needs to be replaced and would be, you know, obviously, it would, it would give us some benefit, but also give benefit to the community to have a facility that could be used in an emergency there, because right now it can't be, if the power's out, so. Stadium renovations, I've kept it on the list because it should be. You know, obviously, at some point, something needs to happen, and, you know, we don't wanna leave it forever and to the point where someday it will be a major problem. So we'd like to, we'd like to address that. That's a $5 million request, based on the bid we got now, you know, more than a year ago, so. And then last but not least, the 13th item on our list is technology hardware replacement. So I don't want it to go unnoticed that, yes, we still need to do that. We have decided, you know, base, to utilize school choice funds in fiscal year '25, and we've talked about other, other years potentially doing things with, you know, technology replacement, but I think it's important to keep it in the forefront and understand that it is a cost that is real, and it is a capital improvement, by the definition of capital improvements. And so I've included it here with a little footnote about that. So that's the list of FY '25 requests, but I think just before we start talking about them, I'd like to just highlight a few others in the list that are major issues there. So there's lots of other stuff on the list, and, you know, some of it is just as important as the things I'm going to talk about right now, but I will highlight that the Dartmouth High School roof we have on the list in 2026. So the MSBA accelerated repair program did reopen, and, but unfortunately, we are not yet eligible to, to apply for that roof, so we've pushed that out to fiscal year 2026. So we're gonna string it together, until we get a chance to apply to MSBA for that. We've also included a new school building in, in 2028 on the list, and window replacement at the Potter and DeMello Schools in 2028. So those are some big items that are out there, there's lots of other items that we need to be able to continue to operate these buildings. You know, we're thankful for the resources we have, but, you know, we can't continue to operate these aging buildings without, you know, without some assistance. So I think that sort of summarizes the plan as it currently stands. I'd be happy to entertain any comments, questions?
Thank you. I think I saw Mr. Nunes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kylie. As I kinda go forward, a couple of things that I highlighted in '26 was the school bus replacement.
Yes.
That one's, it's, I mean, we've had that for a while, too.
We have had it for a while, and unfortunately, so we've had it fixed recently to a fair amount of money that we've had to spend on it, and at that time, it was, it was mentioned to me that, you know, you really need to think about the long-term future of how you're going to utilize that. We definitely need a bus. We use it every day for multiple, you know, lots of different activities, and it's, it's a very, it's not something we could charter out and use the way we, you know, we use it, so, definitely do need it.
And then the other one I had highlighted in '27 was the athletic field restoration. Is that, like, where the baseball diamond is now?
That's our hope.
That's, that's what that is, okay.
That's our hope. And, you know, we're, I mean, obviously, I, you know, I think probably the, you know, Fields and Facilities Subcommittee of the School Committee at some point needs, you know, as we, as we move through with some things, we need to talk some more about that, but yes, that was placed on there as a multipurpose, multi-use field at the high school, which would change a lot of things for us. So we love the idea, it's in the plan, has been in the plan now for a couple of years, and we hope at some point to be able to bring that forward, but it's not, not in the current year.
All right. Other than, other than that, I'd like, I'm good.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's coming back, but I'm good.
Um, just to be clear on how this works, we vote on it, and then it goes to the town, or it goes to town meeting, and then they vote up or down?
So, okay, so, yes, basically. So with a couple more little nuances in there, right? So it's, it would be voted by the school committee. I'm not asking you to vote it tonight. You certainly could if you, if you felt it was a great plan, but if it needs any work, if there, if you'd like to think about it. if there, if you'd like to think about it and come back to it, I'd be happy to, you know, talk more about it at a, at a meeting, you know, sometime, preferably the next meeting would be great so that we're in, you know, in line for the discussion with the town side of government. When we, when you approve, we go to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. We talk about it with them. They make recommendations. It then moves, whatever their recommendations are, moves forward. And the Finance Committee makes a recommendation on it, the Select Board makes a recommendation on it, and then it goes to town meeting. So that's, that's kind of the process.
Okay. And to one of the lines that Mr. Nunes noted is the new school bus in '28?
'26.
'26. Have we looked into an electric school bus? And if the federal government would give us tax credits or some kind of credit, not a tax credit, a credit for that, is that something we looked into?
I've looked into some grants. So there, there have been grants available for electric school buses. We're not eligible, of course.
Okay.
But, but electric school bus is an option. Now, it is extremely expensive. So quadruple this probably is, is a fair estimate. So does make it somewhat prohibitive, you know, without, without federal funding. But they, they were actually pushing the federal funding. I was excited about it and then realized that, yeah, we don't, we don't make the cut.
We don't count. Okay. Also, one, things that some people might think are optional. For instance, the high school track, which I've never known a high school without a high school track. So are there any high schools without a high school track? And if ours is not in working order, does that mean our track team can't compete with other schools because we'd have to do everything at away games and therefore we'd be spending a lot more money on transportation for our track team? Like, yes, they can run on the streets, but we can't host track events. Is that what that means?
That sounds about right.
Okay. I just wanna be clear about that because I think that's one of those things that some people might say, well, why do you need that?
Yeah, we definitely need a track, yes.
And music equipment, I think we need it, but if we didn't, it means that, A, less students would have access to instruments, or they would only have access if their parents had money?
Well, I think that we would be careful, certainly, and consider it about, as we always are of students' needs. So if students have needs, we try and find a way to meet those needs. So I don't think it would mean that a student who did not have the funds couldn't participate. But this stuff needs to be addressed. It's not, you know, this isn't nice to have stuff. This is stuff that we use and need to replace and, you know.
Music department is the pride of, or one of Dartmouth's many prides, for sure.
Couple of questions, Mr. Kylie. First of all, thank you for putting this together. Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we have a conversation in the spring about fire system upgrades with the chief, one of the chiefs?
We did.
Okay. Well, did we approve money for that?
No, we didn't. So there was some discussion at town meeting regarding, well, prior to town meeting regarding the fire systems. And because we had received a letter, which you folks all got, regarding the need to replace our fire systems. But then the chief, in the process, later on, clarified that, yeah, they're existing systems that are in place. It's not that the systems aren't working, it's that they're not up to modern standards in terms of like best practices. So they're old buildings. We know we have old buildings. So nothing has changed in terms of, you know, how those systems operate. They should be replaced. So that's why I'm asking for the funding for design. But we did not, there was some discussion about would the kindergarten reserve fund be used to replace them or something, you know? There was, there was lots.
I didn't remember the details. I just remember we had a conversation about it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. As far as the stadium goes, maybe someday. What do we have left in the capital, the original capital article?
We have about a million dollars left.
We do?
Yeah.
And that's, is that maintenance building completed?
Yes.
Of the storage facility?
Yes. So we have, we have about a million dollars left. Obviously, we had talked about using some school choice money, maybe that won't be available, maybe, I don't know, who knows? But our bid came in at over, over $6 million, so, you know. Then that was the construction cost, which there's also other costs besides just the contractor. So it was gonna be about six and a half million dollars, which was prohibitive. And some of that could have been related to, like, it was just at the tail end of COVID and the contractors were, the prices were crazy. They're still kind of crazy, so I don't think that's, that's gone away. So I don't really think that the prices would be any better if we betted it out today, anything substantial. So obviously, we don't have the money to do the project right now.
I guess one quick follow-up to that is we have the million dollars there, right? We know that things aren't gonna get cheaper for the most part.
Yeah.
Is there anything that we can do to, there, you know? Because every year, it's, say, it goes up 3%, you know, the, the whole overall project.
Yeah.
Is there anything that we can nab now?
There's some things that we could do. The hard part is that the things that we should do first are the things that are gonna cost us some money, right? We should refurbish the concrete. We, like, we shouldn't redo, we, in fact, can't redo the bathrooms.
Right.
Right? Like, that can't, first of all, that costs a lot, a lot more than a million dollars, believe it or not. So we can't do that. And we have to do the concrete work before we do the bathrooms, because we've got a gut the entire, you know, stands. So there are little things we could do. Yep, good. You know, we could work on some railings and things like that and shore up a little bit of concrete here and there. But the stuff that we really should be doing is the, is the stuff that costs unfortunately. So we could take some half measures. If, if we really think we're never gonna get to this, we could take some little.
Right. I'm just thinking, like, the entrances, we talked about originally, the landscape architects had talked about, you know, the fencing on Solcom Road, the, the entrance.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We could, we could do little pieces.
I'm just, I just threw that out there. I won't belabor it. Thank you. And then last but not least, I'm happy to see that we're continuing to put new school renovations at 100 million. I think that's low. But I'm happy to see that's there. And at some point, to your point, Mr. Kylie, about the trucks, you're putting, you're putting money into the trucks to try to get them along, they eventually have to purchase a new truck. At some point, when you look at, you know, and I certainly appreciate all the work that the Maintenance Department, Facilities Department does and what you've done over the past decade with the schools in, in continuing to make improvements. But at some point, you know, you, you look at the $4 million, I think we put aside for window replacements at Potter and DeMello, the flooring, the bathrooms, at, at some point, we really, really need to. And I'm, I'm not gonna let that go until I'm off the committee. And even beyond that, not gonna let that, this town needs either some renovated schools or a new school built. So thank you for putting that together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I, I just appreciate the order in which you, you put the, the items, you know, rating them, and also the narrative attached to each in terms of like describing the exact need for folks in our packet. That's really, was helpful. You know, and just thinking ahead, I, I appreciate the, of course, the 18 to 22-year-old, the program vehicle. You know, that's just not like a, a nice thing to have. That's really gonna help facilitate some really important components of that program, helping students of that age to move into their adult careers in a way that provides them opportunities to work on goals and access resources, volunteer paid opportunities in the community. But also, thinking ahead, and I like matching it up with utilizing, potentially utilizing that after hours for the athletic department. But I just wanted to bring it back to looking ahead and hopefully building upon that program at some point that allows for us to, it's gonna take a lot, but to shift a little, I'll look at my, my friends in the second row. You know, things that kids, students of that age are working on, goals or job trials, volunteer opportunities. When you're really looking at doing best by students, those things don't happen until 2:02 in the afternoon. So I would hope that we keep our eye on the prize in doing what other programs have afternoon, evening sort of potential opportunities for students to work on goals. I know that's not gonna work in the way in which we have it now in terms of contracted hours and that sort of thing. But, but when we do, when we're able to get to that point where we're offering late afternoon opportunities for students to do different things within our community, not necessarily nine to five, but, but just opening it up that, that it doesn't end at 2 o'clock for, for students looking, you know, high school students don't leave school in the middle of the afternoon to go to a job. Maybe some do have to do that, but realistically, those things happen after school. And so at any rate, I just wanna be mindful that in that case, wouldn't allow for the sharing of a vehicle in that situation. But I do appreciate the way in which you ordered them. I agree with it. That's all I have to add to what my colleagues have already shared for feedback. So with that, we are to a point where we can, I would entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
Recede.
Recede.
Recede this, Madam Chair, make a motion. We recess this meeting to move over to the Selectmen's Meeting Room to, for a meeting, for a joint meeting with the Dartmouth Board of Selectmen and the Dartmouth Finance Committee. And when that is completed, to come back, to return to this room for a continuation of our meeting.
Does it roll call?
No.
Just, just done.
You have a second.
Oh, yeah. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously four, zero. See you on the other side.
Can I just, I would like to call to order the Select Board meeting of January 8th, 2024. Meeting starts here in room 304. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain seated while we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Please be seated. He's a little bit late, but we were working. We weren't, we're staying warm in the corner over there. Let's see. I will announce first off that our fifth member, Mr. Gracie, is not here on Zoom or in presence, so there are four members present here. The, there'd be no need for any remote voting. We'll vote as a unit should it come, come across for the Select Board. The warrant has been signed, and we have a lot of people, oh, boy, we do have a lot of people here, okay. Today is the second in about a month's worth of a joint meeting with the School Committee, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee. Thank you very much. There's been a lot of work done between the last time we met and now, and we appreciate everyone trying to pitch in and do the right thing for town. I was gonna turn the meeting over to Mr. McGinnis, and it's all yours.
Okay. Thanks. Hold on one second here. All right. Good evening. So as you recall, last time at the joint meeting, we got together to talk about the school, town and school budget and some challenges that we had. Subsequent to that meeting, we had other meetings with, on finance and also with our Long-Term Capital Planning Committee about what the approach should be moving forward, you know, what the challenges are, how to bridge the gap, and what some options are. So I'm gonna give the presentation that I gave last time. I'm gonna kind of go through the slides that kind of talk about expenses, town revenue expenditures quickly. I'm not trying to gloss over it. We went over it before. It's the same information. If you have any questions or if anyone has anything that they wanna ask about it, please stop me, but I'll go through it pretty quick. We're gonna do a FY25 budget overview, expenditures and revenues. We'll talk about the school budget, support and challenges, the FY25 projected school budget, some options to fund that school budget by, you know, bridging the gap with free cash, staff reductions, stabilization fund, and a restorative override, and also what some challenges are beyond FY25. So funding our general fund operating expenses, these are all the expenses, the departments that we have to cover in services. Breakdown of those, you can see a large portion of the town's expenses are for schools and benefits, which is health insurance benefits. So that is, but the benefits are for all employees. Oh, and the schools covers Dartmouth schools, but also the Vogels School and the Bristol Laggie. Revenues, we get all our revenues from property taxes, state aid, local receipts, overhead and direct costs and other available funds. The breakdown of those is, you can see the majority is property taxes and then also state aid, which does not increase. It's been pretty flat for a number of years. So, and on the left is a description of those. Property taxes in Proposition 2 and 1/2. The levy limit can only increase in a few ways. One is to do a Proposition 2 and 1/2 increase, which is allowed. So we do that every year. We increase the budget by 2 and 1/2 percent. New growth, which is any new development that changes the tax assessment on the property, which provides for new income from taxes, and overrides, which we've, what you've got on, but once the levy limit is increased, then it is increased in perpetuity, so it just builds off of that. You can see our base levy is 96% of the income that we take in. New growth, which I mentioned, is about, we budget about $600,000 annually. I'll get into that in a little more detail. So that's the breakdown. Here's new growth. You can see it stays pretty steady. We budget $600,000. Some years it's more than that, some years it's others. I talked about 15 through 17, that was South Coast, big development. All right. And we talked about some school challenges to the budget. Even with increased financial support that we've been trying to provide from the municipal side, teacher spending is below average, insurance and benefits are below, all of these items are below average compared to our comparable communities. So it's, you know, these are the costs that are gonna continue to increase. We talk about net school spending and where Dartmouth fits in with other comparable communities that have similar enrollment. You can see while we're over, the net state minimum, we are really low compared to other similar communities of our size, so it's, it's, it's underfunded. These are some new slides. Mr. Kylie provided these to me, but I thought they really helped to stress a point. Times have changed in schools. I don't need to tell the school that, but they were, they're telling me, and I think it's pretty obvious, but it's interesting. 43.2% of Dartmouth students are high-need students. That's, that's a large amount. Here's a definition of high needs. It includes low-income students with disabilities or English language learner. 30% of Dartmouth students are low-income. They're either eligible for a SNAP or transitional assistance. And then also 19% of Dartmouth students are students with disabilities, and they have an individualized education program. You know, this is very different than, say, 10, 20 years ago. So I think this graph elicits a lot. You can just see since 2014, '15, the increase in students with high needs is almost doubled. The same with low-income students and students with disabilities. So they're increased a lot, and that's an impact on the school, and particularly this impacts school budgets directly. So, you know, these are needs that need to be addressed that can't be addressed by just increases from Proposition 2 and 1/2. When we look at the FY24 budget review, I'll go, this is the number, but we came up, last year's base budget was $51,595. That was the final approved budget. Talking with Mr. Kylie about what the school needs for FY25. Special education tuition is gonna increase. Transportation contract, it's anticipated to increase 15%. Legal services is anticipated to increase. And also, there were positions funded through ESAR funding that need to be maintained. So a level service budget is looking at about $54,668 for FY25. Now, when we met with the Long-Term Capital Planning Committee and speaking with the school, we want level service, but we also want the school to meet its needs as best it can. it can under these constraints that we have. The School Committee voted, which was great, to remove the technology, $200,000, and also the curriculum materials and fund those out of school choice. At the bottom, I have remained funded. You might remember previously, the school budget was to eliminate the two elementary teachers, the school nurse, a teacher, and the secretary to the superintendent. So now we're saying, let's leave those in there, but also add the positions for the ESL teacher, the behavioral specialist, and the Atlas Transition Program. So, you know, on a $54 million budget, $85,000 is a lot, but really for what you're getting for that money on the total budget, I think is great value, and it shows that we want to maintain the school's level of service the best we can for FY '25. So when we look at FY '25, the budget with the 54 level service, but plus the few proposed changes, it's $54,668. Also looking at FY '26 in more detail and what is really going to be necessary, it's anticipated that FY '26, the budget increase required is going to be about $1.175 million. And that's a 5% increase over FY '25, anticipated. So when we look at what does it take to keep the schools at level service for FY '25, we're looking at about a $3 million increase or 6%. As I mentioned previously, the town tries to fund the school at a 3% increase, which would be $53 million. So we have a budget gap of $1.5 million for FY '25. FY '26, looking at the same thing, at 100, $1.175. So for the two years, you know, we talked about, you know, what the impact is for the two years to get to a point where the school can be consistent with a 3% increase annually for '27 and beyond. And it's anticipated that that total will be about $2.7 million in order to get the school for level service back on track with Proposition Two and a Half, the way the town is budgeting. I really like this slide. I know it's a little busy, but it really shows. Here's Proposition Two and a Half in blue. Green is the school's, you know, requirements over time, and you can see how it just grows, and we're on this trend where unless we do something immediately to get back to our more, you know, more predictable trend line, it's just going to grow every year more and more. So we need to figure out how to address this. This is just a slide talking about where we're at. $1.5 million for FY '25 and another $1.1 for FY '26 to be the $2.7 million. And then we have the challenges that we wanted to talk about. You know, the schools had an average trend of over 4%. You saw that on the previous slide with the graph. It also has a deficiency in net school spending as compared to other communities. There's a deficiency in per pupil spending compared to our other communities. And also, this is town-wide. We need to address turnover related to compensation and health benefits. So we have issues with recruitment and retention, not only at the schools, but across town. And the Select Board and the School Committee, we're all committed to valuing good employees, and we want to make Dartmouth, you know, a destination that employees want to work here, and the systems get better, the town services get better, so it's important to us. This just reiterates what we're looking at, a gap for the next two years of about $2.7 million. I'll go over the funding options. Again, I've refined some of these numbers to reflect the actual numbers that we've been provided since the last meeting. You know, free cash, this changes a little bit. What you can see, I've kind of highlighted up in the left is the actual numbers provided for FY '25 and '26. But then also assuming '27 and '28 would be a 3% increase. You can see trying to use free cash to bridge this gap, we'd be at $7 million within three years, so really not sustainable to use our free cash. You can see this drop, the drop-off is the same, it just goes a little faster. But we use free cash, as you know, to pay for annual capital, which is vehicle replacements, building repairs, sidewalks, stabilization fund maintenance, and long-term capital stabilization. Staffing reductions. Now, this one has changed quite a bit when incorporating the new numbers. For FY '25, to incorporate a $1.5 million budget gap, we're looking at about 21.3 full-time equivalent positions. And also for FY '26, we would be looking at 17 full-time positions. And you can see in '27 and '28, the jump from, is not much. So you can see it would level, it would level off, but you're looking at two years and, you know, 38 positions. And that's, you know, while it is town-wide, it affects, would affect all town departments, and that would need to be determined, it's, it would be really hard for the town to absorb the loss of 38 positions over two years and provide service that's even acceptable to the community. Stabilization fund, same thing as free cash. You know, while we do maintain a stabilization fund, which is like the town savings account, it would be, it would be gone, oops, sorry, within a few years by FY '29, at the rate that we are having to supplement this gap. Supplemental override. Now, in the past, I presented different numbers for the override. This one is $2.7 million. That equates to about $172.16 on the average tax bill per year. I refer to this in the blue, these slides, the Dartmouth residential tax rate right now is 8.78. Our comparable community average is 11.60. That difference, I like to elicit this, equates to $23 million in spending that other, the average communities have over the town of Dartmouth right now. So I real, you know, we talk about this a lot. Tax bills are high. We are very sensitive to that. But when we look at what Dartmouth residents are getting for their tax dollars, it is a significant, significant service to the town. And, you know, I talked about this too with the fire districts. When we look at comparable communities, we want to compare apples to apples. A lot of the comparable communities, the fire departments are in the general budget, general fund budget, part of that, but we have fire districts with their own tax rate. Even when I incorporate those tax rates, you can see that Dartmouth residence tax, residential tax rate is still well below the average of comparable communities. Here are those comparable communities. You can see there's a number of them. They line up with Dartmouth in a number of ways. That's why they're not sorted in any particular order. You can see the averages at the bottom, but under the residential tax rate, you can look at all those, and you can see that Dartmouth, I think, is the lowest, second lowest. So, you know, it's significant, and, you know, that's something that the town has this capacity to increase. This just reiterates that. We'd be looking for a $2.7 million override for FY '25 and '26. You'd be looking at $172. Down below is the FY '23 property tax information. For the average home assessment was $421. The average tax bill is $3,696. So we're still sensitive to that. We understand that. But $172 would certainly go a long way in kind of helping to address some needs and could be affordable for the public. We talked about override last time, just in general terms. I know people, when they hear override, they think, oh, well, they don't have a lot of success. We did some research. Chris Vitale, our Assistant Town Administrator, and Magnolia McComish, the Communications Coordinator, did a lot of research on recent overrides in Massachusetts. Since 2020, there have been 149 overrides sought by communities. The overrides for school department were 52 or 45% of those. The number of successful overrides was 115, so 77% of overrides in the state are passing. I know a lot of people think overrides, oh, they never pass. They do. In fact, three-quarters of them do pass. So that doesn't mean they're all going to be successful, but, and when they come to school departments, the rate's even higher. It's 82%, almost 83% of overrides for school departments have been successful. The average override dollar amount by school departments for a fiscal year, just one, is $9.78 million. And we have this little note, some communities do à la carte overrides where they, the towns vote on certain things. Comparable communities, you hear me talk about that a lot. Dartmouth is on the left. If we were to pursue a $2.7 million override, what that would equate to at 172 on the average bill. And you can see other communities, Bellingham, Melrose, Ipswich, these communities really vary. These are not like our comparable communities, but these are communities that have had recent overrides that we wanted to, that seemed more in line with what Dartmouth is looking at. And you can see what those override amounts are, the populations of the communities, and what it equated to on the average tax bill. You can see, you know, for some of these communities, it's about $250 to $500 on the average tax bill. Then we talked about if an override was to be pursued, how that would work. Here's our general regular budget meeting schedule. We have an election in April. We have June town meeting, and then 30 is the end of the fiscal year. But an override requires town meeting approval and election approval. So because our election is before town meeting, we need to, we would need to be creative or look at it in a different way. So I've put together some options. The first option would be a special town meeting in February, that, February 27th, that would allow, if it were to pass at a town meeting, it would go to the ballot in April, the regularly scheduled election in April. And the cost to do a special town meeting is about $5,000. I will say this, so the town clerk has four elections already scheduled for next year, so it would be, you know, it would be something to consider, to do a fifth election. But, you know, these are just options to look at. Option B would be having a special election in May and a special town meeting in April, which would be both. And that would allow for, you know, more of a timeline. And it would also, I know Mr. Kiley puts out notifications to, employment notifications to teachers on May 15th. This would allow the town to know by May 15th if there was an override pursued, whether or not it passed. The cost for the special town meeting would be $5,000. A cost for a special election is about $40,000. So we'd be looking at about $45,000 to have a special town meeting and a special election. Option C is to maintain the regular June town meeting, but also have a special election in July, a July 2 election. I don't know how that would go over. But it is, it is an option, and that would allow us to maintain the regular June town meeting, and those are the options for the override. So in summary, you saw this last time, but it's just been updated a little more. Options for funding the school budget, you know, free cash, really not an option. Staffing, you know, when you look at this, averaging $65,000 per position, and I think that's pretty accurate, you're looking at about 38 positions over two years. Same with the stabilization fund, same, similar to free cash. And then the override, it would be about $172 on the average tax bill. Beyond FY '25, we talked about the impact of health insurance costs on recruitment and retention. Our current split's 5644 on our HMO with employees. The average annual health insurance rate the last, I think, seven or eight years has been 5%. It really fluctuates. Sometimes it's zero, sometimes it's 12. They're telling us to anticipate an increase in the health insurance for next year of 10%. We'll find out, I think, within the next few weeks what that actual number is, but they're usually pretty accurate when they tell us. And then a lot of questions we get asked is, well, how do we, we want to be a 6040 community. When we do an analysis of what the cost would be for the town to go from 5644 to 6040, it would be about $1.7 million per year for the first year, and then it increases after that. So it's a significant cost to do that small gap. And then when you look at the annual increase in health insurance costs, the savings to the employees, it really, it diminishes within three years. So it's, it's tough to go that route, but, so we're still continuing to look at options. We do an analysis on this analysis constantly. We're also looking at other ways to provide better health insurance to the employees. So this is a constant project that we're working on because it goes back to recruitment and retention. We really want good employees, and we want to be able to maintain that. The Long Term Capital Planning Committee has been meeting, you know, so it's, while we're trying to bridge the budget gap at the school, it is a priority issue. There are also other items that we want to prepare the town for the future, and we want to make sure that Dartmouth continues to be a place that people want to live and work and go to school. So we're looking at long-term capital projects, the Paydeneer Bridge, middle school, high school. The high school I always like because that's the new school, and it's already, almost ready time for replacement. You know, we're looking at a recreation center possibly and improvements to the Council on Aging facility. When we look at this, as I mentioned earlier, we evaluate the funding over 30 to 40 years. So when people see these costs for some of these capital projects, it's not happening tomorrow. It happens over time. We would try to fund it so that the impact to the resident is minimal. It's never minimal, but as minimal as possible, but you're also getting a lot. And, you know, so we move forward with that. We're also evaluating wastewater and water, long-term capital needs, same thing, 30 to 40-year implementation schedule. The downside with the water, wastewater needs is their enterprise funds, which means all those improvements need to be funded through the utility rates. So that's why a large portion of our ARPA funding has been dedicated to DPW water and store needs, so to help offset those costs in the future. And then I have the members of the Long Term Capital Planning Committee, member of the Select Board, Capital Planning Committee, Finance Committee, School Committee, Town Administration, Finance Board, Public Works. I really give credit to this committee. It's a diverse committee that takes a broad look at the town and understands town finances, but also long-term capital, and they're, you know, they're working with their boards and committees, and we're working internally. So it's been a productive group. I think it's been very helpful to kind of get to this point. And that's the presentation. So we're at about the $2.7 million difference for the two years. I'll go back to that slide. Sorry. There we go. And I tried to go through that as quick as possible, but covering everything, so if I missed anything, let me know if you have more questions.
Sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McGinnis, just thank you very much. I wasn't here for the last one, so I appreciate this. But you talked about the general overrides that the community, you know, there's been 114 or something of that nature. Were those operating overrides? Were they debt? Were they capital? Do you know that?
We can get that detail.
You know, I mean.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
In other words, you know, the 115 out of the 149 that were successful. I mean, were they debt exclusion, somebody's building a school? Or were they capital because they need a million dollars in dump trucks? If you know what I'm saying.
Chris, do you know offhand if they were just, were they for capital or were they just for school budget?
There's a very general description that the state provides. Some of it's all intermingled, so we could get those numbers for you.
Yeah, we could do more research.
Yeah. I mean, I think that would be helpful, too.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman, at the moment.
Okay. Mr. Bowles.
Mr. McGinnis, the comparison you did for Dartmouth, Bellingham, Melrose, et cetera, et cetera, you didn't list the average of what the average home assessment would be for Dartmouth. You have 172.16. The other towns have a number next to, for instance, Bellingham had 338,000, Melrose had 554. So what would be Dartmouth's average?
Oh, 441. It's on another slide.
441. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McGinnis, I'm curious, when you were talking about tax rates, there's been no mention of our commercial rates. And the reality is, that's a key reason why our rate in Dartmouth for residential is so low, that we have two rates in town, and the commercial folks take the brunt of the taxes. There's an extreme difference. I'm making the assumption that they will also be affected by this increase. And I did some calculation at the, of the comparable towns that you offered, and if you look at those rates, so our commercial rate in Dartmouth right now is 1762. And I looked at all the rates for the towns that you listed where you did not include the commercial rates. So their average is $17.47. So in that sense, Dartmouth is actually above the average. And if we take into account the different fire districts, which of course is not in that, 1762, our commercial rates in town are actually between $18.05 and $18.51. And that is way above the average for all the comparable communities that you mentioned. So what that says to me is, our small businesses in town are going to take a hit on this, and I don't think it's fair. I think they took a hit for three years of COVID, and this is a big hit on them now. These are small businesses, and they're struggling. Not everybody is Target and Walmart and Home Depot. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Gobbin.
First of all, I'd like to thank Jim Kiley. You know, every time I have a question... You know, every time I have a question, you know, he's always right there to give me the answer. Also for getting us the budget so early. This year, we're probably going to spend 40% of our time on the school budget. We're going to be spending, it's going to be much more of a focus. As of right now, at our last meeting, we decided that we have no opinion on the overrides. We need more information. We also, we need to like see the whole budget before we make any kind of recommendation. And we like to see the long-term capital situation. So, you know, it's just too early for us to make any kind of recommendations. We all have different opinions, but one of the things I did want to talk about, because I brought it up at the last meeting, was student, student choice. And to me, this is low-hanging fruit. The number of school choice students in the high school is 132. The number of students in high school is 956. So school choice percentage is 13.8. We've been told that these are empty seats. Well, 13.8% is not empty seats. It is empty seats at the current staffing, if you want to say, okay, this is the current staffing and we want to fill empty seats. The total expenditures per pupil, per the budget is $17,300. The school choice revenue per student is 5,000. And that's by state law and it's been 5,000 for over 20 years. So you ask yourself, what is the true cost, what is the true variable cost of these school choice students? At $5,000 per student, this only covers 32% of the cost. So obviously there's some fixed costs there that, you know, we would absorb anyways. But, so the big question is, what is the variable cost? And that's a very, very difficult question to answer because it's a lot, it's very complicated to try to figure out what our true variable costs are for each of these students. But I can tell you that it's higher than 32%. And if, you know, the, we've also been told that the, the student to teacher ratio is the highest predictor of favorable outcomes for student success. And if you make the argument that these are empty seats, then the teacher to student, and it doesn't cost us anything, the teacher to student per 100 students with out-of-town students is 8.1. The teacher to student ratio per 100 students without out-of-town students is 7.0. So these empty seats, if you, if you make the argument that the teacher ratio is important to the students, then by having students, out-of-town students here in the school system deteriorates the education of the Dartmouth, Dartmouth school. Let me finish, please. So, so the recommendation would be, and this is really up to the school committee, would be to phase out school choice. You know, we have students here that are, that have been in here, you can't just throw them out. So we would recommend that, starting in the, starting next year, that they, year one, they don't take any more school choice students. So if you take, and I, in my mind, the variable cost per student is 50%, would be about 50%. And that's just based on, you know, what Bishop Stang charges for, per student. And, and it, you know, it could be 48, it could be 52, but it's not 32. So it's costing the town, the town is paying for out-of-town students' education. So year one, that would be 33 students that you wouldn't put into the school system and that would be a savings of $285,442. The population of Dartmouth schools is decreasing and it's decreased quite a bit at the, over the last few years. And aside, you know, the town of Dartmouth senior population has increased at a rate of over 9%. So one of the, one of the predictors of, or any organization has to service the stakeholders. And in the town of Dartmouth, the stakeholders, the seniors are expanding. There are more, more seniors that, into the population. And I think it's important that, as far as the strategic plan for the select one, that's certainly something that has to be looked at. And, you know, as part of the strategic plan for the schools, you know, right sizing the school system to provide quality education for the Dartmouth students should be a goal.
Can I ask Mr. Gavin what right sizing the school system means? Through the chair.
Right sizing the school is to have the right number of professionals, teachers, you know, employees for the amount of students that are Dartmouth, from the town of Dartmouth.
What about a direct response to the numbersy in terms of school choice funds? Anybody want to, from schools, want to address that?
I would like to add a couple of things if I could, Mr. Tattlebaum. First of all, at the budget subcommittee meeting, which Mr. Gavin and a few representatives, I know Mrs. Hamm was there and my memory escapes me, the third person from the FinCom, that we had with myself, Dr. Jenkins, Mr. Kylie, Dr. Saban McGuire, this, he brought up this question, the finance committee brought up this question. And Mr. Kylie, all of us respectfully stated a few things. One, we have school choice at the high school for a reason. We have school choice open at the high school right now because regardless of whether or not we take school choice students in, we have extreme, we have plenty of room in some of our classes because, and please chime in anytime, Dr. Saban McGuire, Mr. Kylie. Because of the schedule, because of the courses that we have at the high school, we have to offer, whether they're AP, there, there are several different levels. There are college readiness, there, I forget what the other one, general, general studies. But this, I believe there's three different levels that regardless of whether or not we take in 130 school choice students, we still have to operate these classes. It would be a very different situation if this was at the elementary or the middle school. Because we have a fixed amount of, we have a fixed amount of classes at those levels. And the, the opportunities and the availability is just simply not there. So we stated time and time again to Mr. Gavin and his committee members that regardless of whether or not we have 130 less students or 130 more students at the high school level, it's not going to make a difference because we still have to run these courses and run these classes to give the opportunities to our high school students, whether their career and college readiness or their AP classes. Furthermore, our, in my opinion, and I'm proud to say that in 2017, I was on the first school committee to vote school, school choice in, it's going to be school choice that's going to bail us out of this at the end of the day. And in addition, I'm for school choice because it not only helps us physically, but it helps us enrich our students. Enrich our students at the high school gives them more opportunities to meet students from other municipalities and not just Dartmouth. Thank you.
You know, we, we all, all three of these committees bring different perspectives. That's our job. This, the school committee, I think, has spoken on school choice issue. Whether we agree or not or not, they, they set the rules. And it seems that maybe can be put this matter to rest in terms of what the future is of school choice, in terms of, in terms of the reality of what it actually costs or not. I think it's their job to determine the success or failures of school choice. And obviously they've spoken what they're going to do. I don't know what else to say.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bowles.
Just a couple of things. And this is basically aimed at the school committee and Mr. Kylie, I probably have a good handle on this. The $5,000 rate is set by the legislature? And has there been any kind of attempt to modernize it for all intents and purposes?
So, Mr. McDonald, the, the rate was set in the law when it was established and it has never changed. So that $5,000, there's not been an increase. I mean, I certainly don't agree that that is the way this should be approached. However, there has not been an increase since its inception.
All right. So has the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, if I recall correctly, have they pushed for any kind of legislative relief on this?
In my experience, in the, in the couple of times that there has been a significant change in the last, you know, 24 years that I've been doing this, in terms of education funding, it has been brought up and never been included as part of the solution. So with the Student Opportunity Act that's currently being implemented, that Dartmouth doesn't get any money for.
So basically, it seems to me that the legislature is more interested in doing charter school help than public school system help. Okay, got it.
I, I think we've got a lot to cover. And if there's anybody else has any else to talk about as far as school choice is concerned.
A question for Mr. Kylie.
Thank you.
I think I asked you this the last time. So what is the, the balance of the school choice revolving fund?
So at the beginning of the year, it was $2.3 million. We've spent some this year. We've also, we also gradually will receive money throughout the year quarterly from the state. But we started the year with $2.3 million. We did so, so pre-pandemic, we entered the pandemic with about $400,000 in school choice funds. We knew that we were getting, you know, gradually, all these programs arose, the ESAR funding was $5 million for the town of Dartmouth. So we utilized those ESAR funds and deferred spending on school choice because those monies, of course, could be carried forward. And there was discussion with the school committee at the time about how we were going to attempt to save some money so that when the ESAR cliff came, we'd, we'd have a little bit of money.
So would it, wouldn't it be a good idea to close the gap and use that money?
I'll defer to the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fair enough. I think Mr. McGinnis had a slide on that.
Did he?
No.
No.
There's no, just there's no committee.
Run your own over there.
I apologize. But, you know, Mr. Kylie, if you go back on, I'm going to put my glasses on so I can see what I'm doing.
I'll get it, John.
I got it, I'm ready to have, I got it. It popped up, it was easy to get to. But, you know, we have, one of the suggestions that Mr. Kylie gave is a very nice spreadsheet for a spent, school choice spending alternative type of deal with. What we have right now, what we're spending it on, what the spending over the next few years is going to look like with inflation and things of that nature. But also using 1.5 million to balance the budget next year in FY25 and 1.1 million, 1.175 in FY26. The problem you run into is you do use those two numbers and at the end of FY26, we're bankrupt. We, bad choice of words, I apologize. We have no money. We're in a hole. Okay, with school choice. Okay. The 1.5, the 1.5 leaves us with $748,000 and such. But when you take that at, in what we get and what we would possibly be using it on type of deal, including the 1.1, we end up with a deficit in that account. If I'm correct.
That is correct.
That is correct. So I don't know if Mr. Kylie can share with all these gathered here of his alternate school choice spending plan, but that might be worthwhile. He gave us two alternatives just before we came to this meeting. And one was a five-year plan of spending down school choice so that in the end, we would be, as we were before COVID, before ESAR funds, using all of the school choice monies on one-time issues. And then he gave us another choice of using school choice to bridge our budget gap. It's unsustainable. No matter what, we still need an override. The only thing that we get from using school choice funds to bridge the gap is it gives us time to be more thoughtful about the override. It makes it so it wouldn't be necessary to have a special town meeting or a special town election, which costs the town money, which we'd rather not do. It allows us not to push the override into two to three months, which seems a little hasty. And it doesn't allow the population of Dartmouth to be part of the process and educated on the issue.
Correct.
Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think the school committee in our, in our meeting, we just recessed out of, I think we hear a lot of people's concerns loud and clear regarding school choice. And a couple of things to keep in mind with school choice is, one, it's voted every year by school committee. So all it takes is a turnover and, in school committee positions, new members to come on, and it certainly could be, could be voted off right off the table. So that, that is certainly something to keep in mind. But we are, we are certainly cognizant of the balance in school choice and the fact that we got ESAR funds that was able to augment some of our spending and we didn't have to pull from school choice. But we certainly fund a significant amount of programs through the school choice program, which we're certainly, we're fortunate enough to do because we wouldn't be able to offer them after-school programs, summer and after-school programs, a strength and conditioning program, music stipends, a number of different things. So we're certainly, the conversation that we had at the school committee meeting was that, what my colleague had just finished saying was, we're, we're willing to work with the town, we hear you, we'd be willing to augment our budget, I think. But I, at the end of the day, this is simply the same issue that Mr. McGinnis brought up in which this is, considered the stabilization fund, it would be bankrupt in X amount of years. In X amount of years, this is, this is a one-time, this is a one-time source. We can't continue to operate, you know, our struc, our operating, structural operating deficit this way. We've got to have a, an override. And we need some, the, the school committee is willing to, to at least entertain this conversation with this, using the school choice funds. But we need some kind of, I don't want to say guarantees, but we need to have some kind of reassurances that we're not going to be back at the same place next year and that we're willing to, if the boards are willing to at least support an override, putting it on the ballot and having a special town meeting next year, that we'd be willing to at least entertain the conversation of using school choice funds.
I'd let.
For this year, to, to close the FY25 budget gap.
About $2.7 million, plus or minus, that's.
That's two years.
Two years. The, the ESAR funds, the ARPA funds are all extraordinary one-time uses and affects how we run our government and where we get our money. And it, and I appreciate that it may, you consider it like a quasi-stabilization fund, but I, I don't, I don't see the logic in asking people this year to fess up on an override when there was money available for this year. However, I for one, and I've been saying it week after week, meeting after meeting, that our long-term planning is what's important here. And long-term planning means to me, capital expense, schools expense, building expense, paying our employees, insuring our employees. And if we think we can get by with, you're covering the deficit for this year or two and then not do long-term planning to include what may be an override, we're kidding ourselves. And I for one, as part of the long-range, long-term planning committee, we are committed to that package. That's how we got involved in the override issue in the first place. How could we face? How could we face, you know, paying for a water, a sewer system when today we need to pay for schools? And that's how it evolved. But we gotta get our, get our eyes off the short term and paying everyday expenses and look at the long-term business. So, if you're looking for that commitment, I, for one, understand it completely. But on the other hand, I cannot justify letting money sit there, no matter how much it is and whatever the revolving funds are, and not cover that for now with a planned commitment that we can do better going forward.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair, and I think that was the conversation that, that we were having. Good to hear.
Mr. Garvin.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just wanted to show that school choice perspective, you know, for the public, so that there's, they see another side of this. As far as rightsizing, you know, the school, the police department has to right-size, the DPW has to right-size, you know, all these departments have to provide quality service with the, with the funds that they have. That said, I'd like to ask any of my members if they have any questions that they wanted to, to ask. Terry, I'll let Terry go first, cause you're.
I don't have a question, I have a statement coming. I think that when you look at the student population in Dartmouth, it would kind of be common sense, people would think, well, the, you know, numbers are going down, so then the budget could go, could go down. But I think if you look at that one slide that talked about the increase in student need in the past 10, 15 years, what, what has happened, and it's very, it's very difficult to explain this to the average person, but what has happened is the numbers have gone down, but the work has gotten bigger. So, there is more work that needs to be done for a smaller number of students. That, that might be hard to understand, if you, especially if you don't work in the school district, but if you look at the number of kids who are in low-income homes, the number of kids who have IEPs, the number of kids who just have high needs other than that, it's amazing what the increase has been. So, I do understand why there is a need to fill this budget gap over time. There's gonna, it's gonna, even if the school choice funding is used in the next year, that is not gonna solve the problem because we're gonna be back in the same place the following year. Maybe, as, as Beth said, you know, it gives more time for planning, which is, which is a benefit. But I think that that is the hardest thing for the average person. When you talk to people who are involved with the schools, problems that come to mind are, why are all the buses? That question comes up over and over again. If the number is going down, why is the budget going up? I get that, I get why people would think that, but I think that if you just look at that one slide, and anybody who's leaving here tonight, to have the knowledge that, yeah, the numbers have gone down, the work is bigger. It's much bigger.
Janine?
Thank you. It's encouraging to hear that the suggestion was made to be more thoughtful about the approach to, to an override, because I believe it's been way too hasty being pushed forward. I, as I already stated about the tax rates, and Bob mentioned about the seniors, we have to be empathetic to the others that are in this town, and this is a terrible time in the economy for people. I mean, I know this is probably a terrible thing to say, but not everyone is thinking about the schoolchildren. They're thinking about putting food on their table. So, it's important that we approach this in a thoughtful manner, and I think that there are, there can be more thought put into it, basically. But I also have a question after this. We talked about the school choice funds, and yes, they are considerable. Hopefully, you are thinking of using those for the gap. But there's also the kindergarten stabilization fund, which, to my knowledge, has $324,949 in it, maybe more, but that's what it had. So, some of us sit here and think, there's a lot of money out there, and we're wondering when it will be spent, versus coming to FinCom, you know, for our reserve fund, which happened twice last year. And I'm not saying it was for bad reasons, but what bothered me after the fact was realizing after we did two reserve fund transfers last year, all that time, you had $2.3 million in school choice funds. So, that was, it's disturbing that that's how the money's being looked at or not spent.
Comments? Where do we go from here?
No?
I have a comment. It gets away from school choice and onto my favorite, transportation.
Well, favorite.
Yeah, you are, okay. Well, here's the deal, of course, we don't know the actual budget yet because it's still in negotiation. All we have said or seen is gonna be a 15% increase. And at the subcommittee meeting, which I attended, along with my other colleagues here, Mr. Kylie alluded to that maybe there were some efficiencies, that we could capture some things we could do internally, that, for hopes, hopes that would decrease the potential costs of transportation and make it more efficient. I thought of, and it wasn't even my idea, it was just mentioned last spring about centralized drop-offs and pickups in the town, things of that nature, that, that could, after research, you know, we're not gonna out at the 10,000-foot level, after researching that, it's always my getting at, it's really, I would like to see more emphasis put on trying to make that a little more efficient than what it is right now, because those costs are gonna be, keep going up, as with the school budget. You know, it's just a matter, it's just what it is, it's inflation, the school buses are gonna be charging labor, if their expenses go up with fuel, I mean, it's just gonna be passed on to us. They're not gonna really absorb anything, they're just gonna pass it down. So, with that being said, I'd like to see that issue being addressed as far as making the school transportation a little more efficient, if possible.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah. This is something that has been discussed, not only, you know, now, it was discussed when you were on the school committee, it was discussed when I was on the school committee, and it was discussed before we were on the school committee.
You didn't have a bus, Mr. McDonald?
No, it's not that. You know, that's the, that's the biggest, the biggest problem is, people say, wow, there's a whole bunch of buses, they're empty, and there's only five or 10 kids. State law requires that a bus, a seat be available for every student in the system.
I understand that.
Whether, no, I'm just saying, but see, that seems, that seems lost in the din out there, okay? And you can see, you know, these buses will be full. You only have to take a look at the Potter School parking lot, the middle school parking lot, you know, the high school, you, the Mellow, they're out, they're out on Dartmouth Street. Quinn, they're, I mean, more parents want to pick up their kiddos than have them on the bus.
Right.
For whatever reason, because maybe something's going on the bus that the kid doesn't like, or maybe it's because it's a 45-minute ride and the kid doesn't get home on time, and this, because they have to go to gymnastics, or they have to go here, or there's, there's viola practice somewhere down the line. So, that's, you know, that's part of the, that's part of the issue. Now, I know that high school and middle school students are dropped off at a point. All the kids in my neighborhood get dropped off at the top of the street, and they all walk. In my mother's neighborhood, they come down to Point Robert Street, and parents are there picking them up, or they walk. So, I know that. What I don't think the community will have a stomach for is having the little ones at a central point, and then having them walk in some areas, because we know there are plenty of knuckleheads out there that just go through and do not stop at school buses, especially on some of these major thoroughfares. And I think that's, that's a big problem. But I do know, and it's happened when you sat on the school committee and when I sat on the school committee, that the transportation people over at the school department are constantly working on the routes and adjusting the routes to make sure that it's efficient for these guys. You know, I can understand the problem with the transportation, I can understand the cost. I see it in my business where I'm getting fuel charges. I've dumped companies because they've been piggish about their fuel charges, okay? I, it's just, it's the nature of the beast, unfortunately, and there's been, you know, when we were, I'm not sure if it happened when I was on there, no, it was afterwards. You know, unfortunately, government runs on the lowest bidder. Now, it's the lowest bidder who's the most responsible, but sometimes it doesn't mean it's the best service. And the town had a real bad problem with a low bidder several, many years ago, you know? And it's just, you know, it's just that argument on there. I mean, hopefully, yes, the constant, the school, I know the school department's constantly looking at those things, and they're looking at the best routes possible, and what, what are the, and, but the routes change every single year, you know? The numbers might not, but, you know, it gets longer, and it's, these rides that are, you know, 30, 45 minutes, you know, it's, it's just difficult, and, and, you know.
Let me ask you a question.
We recognize the problem, we recognize the, the empty seats, we know the reason by it, but it's, the average person doesn't see it.
Mr. Kylie's.
Of course. Please do.
Mr. Tattlebaum. So, a few points on transportation. So, we are always trying to be more efficient. We, this year, went from 31 routes, 31 buses, to 30. That is a savings. We know cost is going to be increasing, the national driver shortage, the cost of school buses are all increasing, and all school districts in the country are facing a significant increase in regards to that. In terms of students walking to designated sites, we have fairly poor infrastructure in terms of sidewalks in the town. It is not helpful to, attempting to implement a system like that, although for middle, as Mr. McDonald pointed out, for middle school and high school, we often, depending on where the students live, have, do have centralized pickups. I did an analysis, and I, I'll share it with everybody here when I get a chance, but I looked at the 20, we're the third-largest land area community in Massachusetts. That does not help with cost of actually transporting kids to and from school. Our bus rides are, you know, I think, Mr. McDonald, you said 40 minutes, we have some that are almost an hour, so, for some kids, the kids on the tips of the routes. So, that is a problem, and that is a constraint, for sure. But I looked at all, the 20 largest communities in Massachusetts, and I looked at their spending on transportation. Out of the 20, we're 17th. The average of those 20 is $1,441 per student, we're at $823 per student. The average in the whole state, every community, including all little tiny communities, is $771, and we're at 823. We are above average, we're 50, 50 bucks above average per student, that's not insignificant. But what is, it's telling you is, I think we are doing a good job with the transportation program. I think this bears it out. I would love to be more efficient, and will try to be, and we are working on that, but...
I'm waiting for the opportunity, and you gave me the opportunity, it's a perfect time right now, that I think that we, our tax rate is so low, our student spending's so low, but nobody gets a better bang for the buck than the town of Dartmouth that comes to schools.
Thank you.
And I think, I think that's why we're here, and we wanna keep it up, and we wanna make it better. That's how, that's my personal view. I don't, I know it's a good discussion on transportation, but we need to come up with a plan of where we go from here, and it sounds like the schools are ready to make a, make a revelation to us over the next whenever, in terms of what we wanna do, and how do we wanna handle that schedule-wise? Suggestion, Mr. McGinnis?
Well, I would suggest that the, the school committee reconvene at their regular meetings to discuss, you know, what's been discussed here, then come back to the board, or just maybe send Mr. Kylie back to, to give an update on. We've started the budget process, so we can certainly tell departments, you know, how to proceed until we hear back.
Any comments? I'd like to limit on what we do from here, and when we're gonna meet and how we're gonna do it, if that's okay?
I'll just add that we're going back into session, as soon as this meeting's done, and then show what we can, we're gonna go back on the budget.
Considering the two-year, $2.7 million, and how we're gonna deal with that, in some form.
On that?
Yes, sir.
We don't have that much. You understand? So, the first year could be covered through school choice. The second year, we've already allocated the FY '25 amounts for technology and curriculum and other programs into school choice. So, it, it isn't when, I think Mr. Noon said it wasn't sustainable, it's really not sustainable after next year. So, it's a one-year solution, it doesn't solve all of the following years.
I understand that, and I, come back to us, I think, there's no reason to jump in any proposal at this moment in time, but we know the issue, we know we have a two-year issue, and come back to us with it. And how do we wanna come back? Is another joint meeting, or what's, make a presentation, what do we suggest there, Mr. McGinnis?
I, I don't think we need another joint meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can, Mr. Kylie can come back, and then if Representative of the Finance Committee wants to attend over the school committee, I don't think we need a full meeting, but if, that's my recommendation, but it's certainly not my decision.
So, we will go back, and we will discuss and hopefully vote, but one of the things we wanted to come out of this meeting was some assurance that if we did use school choice funds for the budget gap this coming year, that both the Select Board and FinCom would be behind an override, seeing that it is a short-term solution. So, I did see or hear some agreement.
What I think we're agreeing on is that the necessity for the quick, fast override for 2024 is not gonna be necessary. I think that's what I'm hearing, but we're talking about one year at a time, I think.
One year at a time, but it, so, we're using our reserve funds, so if we get to next fall, and we're still here, we're gonna be up a creek.
We're not gonna be here. We're gonna, there's an override in, in the horizon, there's no question about it.
Okay, I'm not hearing that from over there entirely. I'm kind of hearing it, I'm hearing it from up here.
And that's gonna happen, and you just, I don't know if the town has a stomach for it.
Well, I think they need, they need to discuss.
We can't, there's more decision made today. Mrs. Brooks, you got something to say? We're gonna wrap this up in a couple of minutes.
Yes, thank you. The one piece I wanted to say, and I've been hesitant to endorse an override at this point, because at this point, we've really only talked to the school, the school department. There's other budgets out there, and having very briefly spoken to some other departments about their retention of employees, their services that they're offering, and services that they need to offer or need to update, I think every department, we need the information from every department on what does your department truly need to run in this century, with the needs of that century. We, I cannot endorse going forward on just what the school department needs. I need to know what everybody in the town needs, and I think that's our job. So, I think we all need to pull together, because to spend $45,000 on a special town meeting and a special election, possibly, does not make any sense when we can do it in a thoughtful manner. And we need to look at this for FY '26.
Some kind of timetable, early soon?
What's our next meeting, 2026? Is there a next?
Anybody else?
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman, I just, it's our intention that, to really concentrate on this year's budget for the rest of the year, and then in the fall, when we have the actuals from this year, then we'll, we'll start looking at the override and, you know, what we think, you know, form, form some type of opinion, so that it'll happen in the fall rather than right now.
Great.
Okay?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great comments and great participation. Thank you all so much. I'm gonna take a moment to, to regroup here. Would you come back in five minutes?
We're at 8:00 PM reconvening our school committee. We just came back from a joint session, and so I would like to continue with old business and continue the discussion on the fiscal year '25 budget as proposed, and any additional discussion for that. You raised your hand, Oliver.
I did. Getting tired of hearing from me, Madam Chair?
No, no.
So, I, I would just like to remind the viewing public...
And so, I would like to continue with old business, and continue the discussion on the fiscal year twenty-five budget as proposed, and any additional discussion for that. You raised your hand, Oliver.
I did. Getting tired of hearing from me, Madam Chair?
No, no.
So, I, I would just like to remind the viewing public for the meeting we just came from, that the town of Dartmouth does get a significant, the students of the town of Dartmouth get a significant education for the dollar amount that is spent per pupil. I would like to remind everyone in the audience, and the viewing at home, if we're, are we live streaming tonight? All right? That we are at the bottom, two-hundred-sixty-six out of three-hundred-twenty-two school districts in the state for per-pupil expending. We are doing a phenomenal job managing our money in our budget. And, you know, round of applause should certainly go to the educators, administrators, and school committee in this room.
I think, like I had stated previous in the, in our meeting, as well as the meeting we just came from, the joint session, that I think it's, it's not only expected at this point that the school committee and the school department do this, but I, I think it, in my opinion, that we would be, we would be irresponsible not to look at, at this point, school choice funds, which is ironically exactly what some people want to get rid of. We have it in place. I think it's working. I know we all have different opinions on the board, and I, I respect that, Mr. Noon's. But, and I can say that because we have a good relationship.
No, no offense taken.
But at the end of the day, you know, we do a lot with this money, for our programs, for, for the students' education. And if this, in my opinion, if this means that we have to use this to, to save positions, and keep doing what we're doing, I think that's the right thing to do. So, I'll at least, I'll make a motion that we utilize school choice funds to bridge the budget deficit for the FY twenty-five fiscal year.
I second.
Are there discussion? Mr. Noon?
Can I make a suggestion? Whether we vote this now, or we vote this in two weeks, when Dr. Jenkins is back, and we use a full, I mean.
You're right.
The other, and please understand, what you guys voted, I've got no problem with that, don't get me wrong, okay? But if we're going to talk about using a million and a half dollars to, to bridge it, is I think, if at all, I mean, now, look, God forbid somebody, you know, is unable to be here because of whatever reason, so be it, type of deal. But I think whether we vote tonight, or we vote in two weeks, it's, it's not the end of the world. And I think it would behoove us to just be able to wait for a, a full committee, and let, that way, the five of us are here, and it's, everybody's got a, a say in the matter. I understand the vote, I, and I agree with it, but I just think it would be better, again, on just one person.
So, if we wait for the vote, and it, we don't pass to use the funds, that puts us behind the eight ball for doing an override right away, and jamming it into that.
No.
Two, three months.
I would suggest we have more of a chance to pass it with five folks rather than four if we come up.
Because we also, in all seriousness, have the school choice vote at that meeting for FY twenty-five. So, that kind of gives us a little bit of a thought as to what's going on there. If I'm, if I'm reading my tea leaves correctly from when we set the, the agenda back in October or November, so.
But at this point, we have a motion on the table. We have a, we have a second we would have to withdraw if we were to.
Yeah, I will certainly, if we're done with the discussion, because I know we're, we're seconding with discussion, I will, I, I do think, and Mr. Kylie, please jump in as well, that I don't, as long as it doesn't affect timelines.
Well, if I, if I could, I mean, I, I think, I do think that from the options that were presented tonight in terms of an override, the first option, which is probably the most feasible option for a potential override, if it were to be in fiscal year twenty-five, has us with a end-of-February town meeting. So, if that were to be the plan, and if you didn't vote in favor of utilizing these funds as a body, that would make that, I would think, off the table. The problem with the other scenarios for the override for fiscal year twenty-five, certainly the one that has a July second special election, I don't, I mean, we could do it. We'd be laying off large numbers of staff, hoping that they stick around to find out. Doubt, certainly, I certainly doubt that they would. I wouldn't if I were them. You know, so that I don't think's feasible. So, then that leaves the one middle option, which maybe could work. But that's if the town would consider doing that. I mean, it was the most costly one, too.
Yeah.
So, so I, I don't know. There, I mean, certainly, time is a factor, but, I mean, whatever you decide, we'll make the best of it.
Just before we withdraw or move forward with the vote, however this is going to turn out, I just think it's really important to, outside of that actual discussion, to reiterate. I think it needs to be reiterated, because we've said it already a few times. But we are at this position where we have this money in this account. Had it not been for a global pandemic, and the federal government coming in and sort of helping us to make it through by the seat of our pants those years, we would not have that money in the account. And so, it was incredibly frustrating, it was disheartening to hear folks at the meeting we just left making the, you know, alluding to the fact that we're hiding a pile of money, where in, in actuality, I believe, a little biased, but we are incredibly transparent in my tenure with how you provide. I, I don't think it was much, maybe fifteen, twenty years, that we've actually had that detailed of a budget, where, where we see things line by line. We're very fortunate. I've had folks comment to that fact, that not all districts are that forthcoming or that transparent within, with their spending. So much so that folks can come in at a public hearing on a budget to say, what do you mean by taking the line item and taking my pens and pencils and my access to colored paper, right, and printing for my students? And that's why, because we're so transparent. And to the same, we've talked over and over, anytime we talk about school choice funding, we bring it back time and time again, since I've been on the committee, and you bring us the amount of money we have. And we have never had this amount of money, because we were not unfortunate enough to have, had to provide services to thirty-five-plus-thousand students, and assist our educators and our support staff, and with all that we did during that time, had, you know, the unfortunate reality of a global pandemic, and that federal funding to help bridge that gap. So, I just wanted to reiterate that, Mr. Noon.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. And, and again, just kind of piggyback on that. We've had a policy, a, a plan, that anytime administration wants to spend more than ten thousand dollars, it comes to us. Okay? So, it's not, you know, they can't, and I don't mean it, they just, yeah, it just can't go out the window, that, that type of deal. So, you know, we're kept abreast, and it's at a public meeting, televised, livestream, whatever. So, hopefully, this will satisfy the FinCom, because they're way overstepping, in my opinion.
Anyone else, or how do you? Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
With that, I will, I will withdraw my motion.
I'm going to withdraw in a second.
I don't really want to.
So, can, but to go back to what you just said, Mr. Kylie, sorry. What you just said sort of was, did I misunderstand? I thought you were suggesting that it might be in our best interest to not withdraw, or to vote.
It's okay as long as you vote yes.
So, therein lies the challenge.
So, maybe we should have a conversation and tease it out.
If we vote and we are not, can we bring it back?
I mean, I, you know, if you vote no, then, okay, the first, the first option, and, and primary option for an override this year is kind of off the table, I would think, if, unless you think you can pull off a successful override in one month. I mean, we're, even now, we're a month and a half, so it's not like we have a lot of time, but we would have two weeks less time. So, I don't really think that's realistic. And again, the, the third option and timeline with the July vote, I don't think's realistic, so, and the other one would take some sort of commitment from the Select Board to spend that money, and I don't know, I mean, that could happen, I guess.
Okay. I will.
But I don't know.
I will act.
It's up to you. Whatever you want to do. We'll make it work.
Go ahead, you're good.
So, we currently have a motion, because.
We have a motion. We didn't substantiate your withdrawal.
She didn't.
We had a second that was not withdrawn, so that secures your motion.
So, it's still on the, the motion's still on the table.
So, we can discuss it.
Continue to discuss it, and.
So, so the other option, then, using school choice to bridge the gap, what's involved in passing an override in that short, short term, is A, figuring out how big the override is going to be. And what was discussed in the joint meeting was simply a level of funding for the schools. And Heidi Silva Brooks rightly pointed out that we haven't talked to the other departments in the town, and they should be part of this. So, we don't really know how much that override is going to be for. And we are talking about benefits of all town employees. We're talking about PDW. We're talking about public safety. So, that's, you know, it's hard enough for us to have joint meetings with the Select Board every two weeks, or that's what it feels like. Is that what it is? And then you're going to include all those other people. Can we really come up with a realistic number for the override? And then, once we do that, coalesce and have a good information campaign, so the citizens will understand the necessity and what they're getting for it? Can we really do that in a month and a half, which, if we, if we wait, it will be one month? So, if we wait to vote on this, and then we vote in two weeks, we have one month to get all the departments to say what they think they'll need, for the school department to confirm what we've already talked about, which may not be the end number, and to mobilize to first inform the town meeting members, and then the community. I think that is a lot. And that is why I didn't want to remove my second.
Fair enough. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? And does this need to be a roll call, or just all in favor? So, all in favor of Chris's?
Do you want me to read it again?
Can you reiterate it? In acknowledging that there's no number here, it's just a commitment, can you reiterate it? I apologize.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we utilize school choice funds to bridge the budget deficit for the FY twenty-five fiscal year. That's the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes? Four, zero. Okay. Woo! Can I get a nap?
Cheers.
Okay. New business. So, as you all are aware, that we received an open-meeting law complaint, wherein the complainant states that I, as the chair, violated open-meeting law at the December eleventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the committee, per a requirement of Section twenty F of the open-meeting law, that I did not announce that the meeting was being recorded. So, we've all had, that was in our, I think it was given to us way before our, our packet, when the, and then we asked for an extension, because we weren't meeting until tonight, for us to sort of discuss and respond to the deadline with the Attorney General's office. John, you weren't here, but I think I stumbled over my words, and before we went live, I gave accolades to DCTV, and we talked about it being, you know, recorded, but it did not do that, for whatever reason. I needed a nap, I don't know.
Unfortunately, I haven't, you know, as I said to Mr. Kylie, Dr. Saban McGuire, the other day, this, I have yet to watch that meeting, because, you know, I've caught bits and pieces in the middle of everything, but I've never watched, been able to watch it from start to finish and catch it on DCTV.
Will our complainant caught it while he was watching it as it was being aired?
That would be one of his, that would be one of his cronies that were watching it.
Oh, okay. So, anyway, he was watching it while it was being recorded and shared live. And so, we need to rectify it, just to say that, however, the committee's pleasure, that obviously, you know, obviously, we don't want to violate public meeting. Thank you for keeping us honest, and that moving forward.
Have a nice day.
So, we'll announce, as we usually do.
As we usually do. And usually, on our agenda, it says that we're being recorded and all that, and usually, you read it.
Yeah.
It was just an omission.
I stumbled over my words.
Not purposeful?
It's an occasion.
I think it was an oversight.
An oversight.
He's got nothing better to do.
Just one, just one recommendation. If the committee will entertain me, maybe we can, on the agenda, it says, in addition, the public will be able to access this meeting via livestream. Maybe we can just add recording to it.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, Kate. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
So, that's that. Next, I'm going to turn it over. So, I think that's that for that, right? Okay. Done with that, moving on. I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Saban McGuire, to talk about the twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five school calendar that we have, two options in our packet.
Yes, if you look at the first option, option one, so we have two calendars, and that's for a couple of different reasons. I know that in the past few years, from what I'm understanding, there have been a few changes to way, to the, the vacation time, to the beginning of school, to the holiday, the December holiday break, and then, I guess, the, the last one is the day before Thanksgiving. So, I said that out of order, but in order, that would be the August return date, the Thanksgiving date, and then the, the holiday break. So, in the first option, what we're proposing is a shorter holiday break. And what that would mean for us is that we would get out of school a bit earlier. In fact, we would be out of school by June twelfth. And what I mean by shorter holiday break is that we come back this year, if we look at January, let me go and find it, January first is a Wednesday, of course, that's New Year's Day. We would come back January second and third, so we would get two days of school in. And just to backtrack for a minute, in both options, we would be in school on the, the day before Thanksgiving. So, Wednesday would be a half-day, and that apparently has been what you've done for many years in the past. And anecdotally, I just want you to know that we heard, we did get feedback, especially about the Thanksgiving date, and what we heard was that folks really thought that that was a missed opportunity for instructional. was a missed opportunity for instructional time, and that, so it ended up being a short week, Monday, Tuesday. And as far as the high schools concerned, they usually hold their pep rally on that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and they had to hold that pep rally on Tuesday, which really meant that they had one and a half days of school, if that. And so, anecdotally, we heard from our educators, we certainly heard from some families, and folks really felt like going back to a half day of school before Thanksgiving made a lot of sense for the district. As far as the December date, I mean, the December holiday, again into January, the 2nd and 3rd, Thursday, Friday, if we were to take those days, which is on the option two, that would mean that we would have a two, two full weeks of school would be dedicated to vacation time, which is wonderful. And at the same time, we have to remember that we still have to go to school 180 days. That doesn't change regardless of where our vacation time is. And we also have gotten, again, this is anecdotal feedback, that you're going to get a lot more instructional time in, in January than you are the last few days of June. And we also have to consider the heat. We know, again, our buildings aren't really equipped with air conditioning, we definitely struggled with that at the beginning of the year, and we don't want to fall into that again. And so it's really a decision between, do we want a longer December break or a longer June or summer break, and which is most beneficial for our, our students and our faculty and our families? But we would stick with that Friday before Labor Day, because that seemed to be well-received by everyone involved, our staff and our families.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I personally would prefer option one. A number of reasons I agree with Dr. Saban McGuire, having the students in the 2nd and 3rd of January for educational purposes type of deal. Number two, barring no school, barring no snow days, you know, we're out the 12th, you know, if you've got snow days, you could be looking at the 19th to 20th, you know, depending how many we have.
And the 19th is now a holiday.
Now a holiday, so now you, you know, if you've got five days, you're really going to push out to, you know, the 23rd, 24th of January, using, my fault, June, using those, those other days. So you, you could have that. And I think, in all seriousness, it, Mr. Kylie can expound on this a little bit more, probably, gives our maintenance staff and custodians a little bit additional time to, you know, if we don't have any snow days or we only have one or two days, more time to get the schools cleaned for and, and projects done for, you know, reopening in September.
Absolutely. That's, that's always a factor, and it's always nice to have a little bit of time in between summer school as well. So you get out at the end of the school year, you can get a few things done in the buildings before summer school starts up. So when those are real tight together, that, that makes it a little more problematic.
That's a great point.
Because we are always juggling, trying to work around all the activity that we have in the summer, which is significant, so, yeah.
I also like one, the first, for all the reasons that Mr. Noon said, and also because on the second choice, you come back for a half day on June 16th. Oh my gosh. Nobody's head is going to be there. It's, you know, maybe next year, the calendar will be different and that last day wouldn't be a Monday, but to have your last day of school, a half day on a Monday, not a good idea.
Mr. Oliver, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, so I will, I'll agree with my colleagues that I, I think option A is the way to go, not only for the reasons Dr. Saban McGuire mentioned, but I, I think it, it just makes sense for an instructional point of view to have students in in January versus the end of the school year. I think people, students in, I think a lot of staff are just not in the, in learning mode come late in June.
Especially if there's a lot of heat involved and what's going on as far as the weather's concerned.
That's right. I, I certainly agree. And I think as far as the day before Thanksgiving goes, I'll take responsibility for that. I had, I had, I'll, I'll own it. I had, I think I had brought it up at the last year's school committee meeting. I personally, I, I don't think there's a lot of, a lot of learning going on, the two, the Wednesday before for a half day, but, so I threw it out there. I, you know, why maintain the status quo? Let's try it, let's see how it works. I, I hear, I hear what everyone's saying, I, I respect that, and I hope you respect me for owning up to it. So, yeah, I will, I'm in favor of option A.
Yeah, with that said, I, I do, I do think that, you know, we were all in agreement of that, I think we all agreed, because it sort of felt like post-pandemic, everybody was sort of, you know, you had that, like, exhaustion after you finally settled into a new routine, after going through all of that, it was like, you have a day, you have a day, you get the day off. And it was, it was, it was great for that, but to think of, I love my kids and thank you for everything that you do, but, whoo, well, yeah. To not come back to school until January 6th, to me, feels like excessive, I heard it.
And I mean, and also, and especially too, chances, chances are, everybody in the area is going to be back in school.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And the kids want to get back to school, especially after having a pretty decent time off.
We did check calendars, area calendars, and from everyone that's already been voted upon, people are coming back January 2nd.
And similar, that, that half day on Thanksgiving, so I, I do, I agree with my colleagues, and I would, I would support, I'm, I'm, I would lean toward option, option one, that proposes that shorter holiday, and which, barring weather, June 12th, to be the last day of next, of the school year next year. So...
I'll make the motion that we adopt option one, which is the shorter Christmas vacation, the half day at Thanksgiving, and with no snow days, school ending on June 12th, 2025.
So moved?
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously four to zero. And I will now turn it over to, to Dr. Saban McGuire for the superintendent's update.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, believe it or not, well, you have to believe it, it's 2024. And so, I just thought this would be a good time for me just to share with you my reflection on the beginning of the school year, and despite the challenges that we're having right now, I can tell you halfway into my first year here, I'm thrilled to be here, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the school committee because you really have been wonderful to work with, and even going through this challenging time right now, having your support makes all the difference. And so, and again, I can't thank the team that I work with enough, and just the time that I've spent in schools and in classrooms, I'm incredibly impressed and feel really fortunate to be here and part of the Dartmouth community. So wonderful start to the school year, certainly the budget is going to be a challenge for us, but at the same time, I look forward to working through that, through, again, creative problem solving. I can't tell you how many times we've come to the table and said, well, let's think about this. And so that has been a, a good experience in lots of ways, because you should know that the team that I have working with me, right beside me, are right there, and lots of flexible, creative thinkers, and that's what we're going to need to, to navigate our way through, through this entire process. And so, I always update you on my entry planning, and I'm going to be happy when I never say entry planning again, but we, we're, we're close to, like, being past the point of entry planning, and we really are shifting to some data analysis. I have to say, I had a meeting at the high school today with some of the, with the student advisory group, and we started to look at the data from, from the survey that the students took at the high school. And so those are the kinds of experiences that I'm really looking forward to, not only at the student level, but certainly getting out there and talking with our teachers, all of our educators, and we still have a survey that we're ready to launch with our families, which I think is going to be really critical as we go into, again, this budget. And one of the important outcomes of this is getting into the work of strategic planning, because what we've heard, I think, pretty consistently, and it makes perfect sense, is that you build a budget that reflects your strategic plan. And so, right now, we're working off of a strategic plan that has expired, but at the same time, there's still lots of great work going on in the schools, but we know we need to have clear direction and that we need to be able to share that publicly, and we need to be able to do that in a way that people understand the connection between the budget and what strategic planning is, and what that means for what's happening in our schools. So you'll be hearing a lot more about strategic planning in the late spring, I'll be presenting you with the findings, but it'll be probably early, late fall, when we're ready to come before the school committee, and some of you will be participating in that, but to present, present our strategic plan. So that's where we are with that. I think another, under HR, that was under teaching and learning, but under HR, I think it's important to share with you all, and I know you've heard this, but in the community, that our early childhood director, Dr. Justine Dale, has submitted her retirement, and she'll be with us until March 29th. So she's been with the district for a number of years, she has a 30-plus year career, and she truly talks about Dartmouth as being one of the highlights of her career. So we're looking forward to wishing her well, and at the same time, launching a search for a new director of early childhood, which we do, in fact, need to have, because that's an important source of support for the Cushman School. So, and again, an inclusive group to choose that person, and I'm sure that at least one or two of you will be part of that process. So, you know, I always have to say, we're always looking for substitutes, it's like, you know, I have to say it, I know I'm shameless about it, but I have to say it, because we are always looking for substitutes. And I'm sure the principals here are like, yes, please talk about that. I also want to acknowledge the work that, and under Climate and Culture, that continues to be done supporting our newcomer students. I mean, it has really been an incredible experience to watch our students come in and be so welcomed in the school community, to really wrap their arms around these students and their families. You know that the Baymont site has closed, and I know that you've heard that the Best Western site has also, is also closing, and we're relocating our families. The students at the, other families at the Best Western will be in Lowell. I have to say, as much as I'm, you know, torn, and the school community is torn about losing these students, because we've grown very close to them at the school level, you can see the connections that the kids have with their teachers and with one another, and at the same time, I feel kind of good about the fact that they're going, from what I hear, to a more sort of residential living arrangement, where they'll have more space than they can ever have, living in a single hotel room with a family. And then the other thing is, again, Lowell, Gateway City, lots of access to transportation and businesses and support services. So in that way, I feel really great about that, and at the same time, I also think that the Dartmouth community should be so proud, because the students and families are going to leave Dartmouth, but they're not going to forget how Dartmouth folks made them feel while they were here. So, kudos to everyone. Katie, you were out there quite a bit in the hotels, making sure that every student has, you know, a place to go and a coat if they need one, and even a ride, an Uber. So, again, such wonderful work that you did. And then, finally, just end with wonderful accomplishments. I mean, we get caught up in the fall sports, but there's winter sports happening right now. I have to say, I did get to the basketball game, the boys' basketball game this past Friday, they were playing Brockton, and they won, and I'm glad about that, I have to say this. Just a tiny bit competitive, so I was definitely rooting, and I did not, I did not in any way, you know, tease my friend who is the assistant coach on the Brockton team, but I did say, oh, well, I mean, we're in Dartmouth now. So, again, other things, though, that you should know, I, I got to be a mock judge at the robotics, for the robotics teams, there are two teams that are going to be in competition. Sam Brodsky does a wonderful job, I have to tell you, I listened to both groups present, and I was incredibly impressed and probably could understand about half of what they said. And I did admit that to them. I said, I am probably not qualified to judge the content, but I can judge the presentation. So that's what I stuck to, but they are wonderful, and they're going to be, they're going to be out there competing as well, so I look forward to sharing that with you. And I'm looking forward to looking at the other sports teams in actions, in action. I told Ben I'd be at one of his, apparently he's on the, the track team. Yes. Shout out to Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next is the, before I turn it over to my colleagues, I just would like to take the opportunity, since this happens before we next meet, on January 18th, the Special Parent Advisory Council will be hosting their next meeting at Dartmouth Middle School at 6:30. And we've invited folks from the Bureau of Special Education Appeals. It might sound like, oof, you know, to come talk about mediation, but it is a due process right for families, and it's, I believe that it helps to build partnership, because when you are sort of knowledgeable on both ends about a topic, it demystifies it and, and allows folks to have rich conversation, or not fear-based conversations, but, you know, student-centered conversations, where folks can meet in the middle and figure out what's best for that child. And the folks at the BSCA, you know, they're Switzerland, and they are, the process itself sounds scary, you know, you think mediation, you think, what does that mean, are we going to court? And so there are a lot of options, but really, it's, it's a very informal process, and the folks who are, have offered to come are doing this across the state, and I've sat in on some of their presentations, and I, I know a couple of them personally, and they're lovely, and they, they, they bring the topic with, with that sort of mindset, that, that let's work together mindset. And so it's a great opportunity to provide information to families who might be nervous, perhaps their students aren't new to the process of special education. And I know, you know, when, you just don't know what you don't know until it's in front of you, and as a parent myself, you know, early on, I don't know that I ever had this mindset, but I'm sure part of me was like, well, what does he need? What is he going to get? You know, no, it's not about that, it's about what does the student need to be successful, and how can we work together to make that happen at home and in school? So, again, January 18th, 6:30 at Dartmouth Middle School, information will be put out through the app, the parent app, that I admittedly am really bad about checking, but, but it's there, and we hope that, that anybody of interest will attend on January 18th. I turn it over to my colleagues for any additional happenings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to just make everyone aware, those of you watching at home, everyone here, I serve on the Dartmouth municipal broadband committee. I was appointed like six months ago because of my professional role, and the town of Dartmouth is looking to build their own fiber optic network that would bring internet service to all the residents and commercial businesses in the town of Dartmouth, basically giving residents and businesses another option besides Comcast. That's pretty much the, the number one internet provider in the town, and then you have some other, some Verizon DSL, as well as some Wi-Fi, I'm sorry, some 5G providers. So essentially, those of you driving by the Slocum Road in front of Town Hall, you may notice on the electronic sign asking to take the municipal broadband survey, if you haven't had the opportunity...
If you haven't had the opportunity, we're looking for feedback from the town residents as to uh, what they pay for their cable, but their internet bills as far, as well as if they would be interested in looking at um, in the town moving forward with options to provide internet access to residents directly um, and build our own municipal broadband network. So if you have the opportunity, it's called Dartmouth, the website is dartmouthfiber.com um, where you can go ahead and take the um, internet uh, broadband survey. And we'd just like to get as many residents as we can to take that. And we're just looking, uh, to, you know, there's a number of different questions. But we're going to be advising the select board, um, moving forward.
Thank you. Taken, I've taken that survey myself.
Thank you.
Um, so our next meeting, our, the, the next uh, regular meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Monday, the January twenty-second, uh, six o'clock back at Dartmouth High School in the Library Media Center. Um, as well as the live stream option at youtube.com forward slash DHS TV media um, and DCTV. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call known. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously at eight forty-two. Good night.